We know that it can be blessed if it is your will and we ask for that. And we ask all these things to your sweet son, the King of Kings, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. And God's people said, "Amen."
Ross, pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, everybody has their white agenda in front of them? Any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Chairman and board members and citizens, we do want to amend the closed session. We need to go in closed session to talk about, have consultation with our attorney. My understanding that E3, and I'll have to maybe yield to Mr. Zody, but E3 will be canceled because the planning commission, but I understand still wanted some information of the neighbors of the airport. And that's right, Mr. Zody, am I correct on that?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to bring back that at the Air Force National Reserve District and want that for next month.
So that public hearing will not take place tonight, E3. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have. And you'll see some more additions in front of you and we'll talk about that. We got some carryover money we want to talk about with the school system, but Dr. Martin, I see here in the back, so we'll get to that, okay?
Okay. Need a motion to approve the agenda?
Move to approve with the amendments.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, pass. Okay, we've got minutes, joint meeting with the school board held September 24th and special meeting held October 6th. Did everybody had a chance to review those minutes?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Were there any changes?
No, sir.
Take a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we've got delegations from the public. Ten delegations of the public, we've got one, two, three. We've got seven, so we'll stick with our five minutes. I'll call the first name. Zachary Wells.
Evening.
Good evening.
What kind of Mr. Wells?
First time. I just wanted to, I guess I could stand up here and say just about what everybody else is going to say really, but one thing that's been put on my heart, to be able to come up and be able to share and be able to talk with y'all about, I guess it's more of a challenge for y'all really. I love the prayer, I really do. And I'm glad in which that it's still a thing in this county. Of course, it's not everywhere in the world, but how many of y'all, just by show of hands, just real quick, are a Christian? Okay? And godly trust, right? In this county? So I challenge y'all that if we're going to be making decisions, we need to be thinking about our brothers and sisters in Christ. We need to be thinking about how it affects absolutely every single person, especially with all these tax increases and stuff like that. There's a lot of people in which that are living in this county that are on a fixed income. I challenge you to be able to be more like Christ. That's what I challenge you today. Challenge you to be more like Christ in your decision-making. Think about the poor. Think about the elderly. Think about your people. That's what I challenge you. Don't do it, I understand you got to give to Caesar what is Caesar's, but give unto God what is God's, right? We have to be thinking about that in our decision-making, first and foremost. I know most of y'all really will. And I'm just encouraging y'all to just be doing that, be praying more on this situation and all the decision-makings. Be praying through it all. Because it's everybody out here. Everybody, and it's hurting a lot of people with a lot of increases and I just encourage y'all to really just listen to the people around you. Listen to those in y'all's district. Even the people outside of your district, listen to them. Listen to what they got to say. Take it to heart. Take it to heart. But align your decision-making, if you proclaim to be following Christ, let your decision-making be going along with what Scripture's got to say. Don't be kicking your brother and sister down in the knees. Okay? I get it, like I said, I got to pay and do my thing. I do everything I possibly can to be able to be able to afford everything I've got. I'm blessed with what I have. Good Lord blessed me a whole lot. I'm more fortunate than others, I really am. You know, and like I said, I've been very blessed, but it's even getting tough with me. I grow my own garden, I do a great big old garden too. I can, I freeze, I process my own meat, for the most part. And it's still getting tough for me. And I got my first little one on the way. Thanks be to God, because I didn't even know if I was going to be able to have little ones. But it's a major blessing to me. And now I got to think about my little one. So I just encourage y'all, align it with Scripture. Think about your brothers and sisters in Christ, even if they're not a brother or sister in Christ. Still got to treat them like they are. We still got to treat everybody with love. That's all I wanted to say tonight. Honestly, I could go home, but I just encourage y'all, align it with Scripture. Okay? Don't make a rash decision on anything, don't jump to conclusions, nothing. Align it with Scripture. Pray about it. Pray about it together. That's the best thing you can do. Pray about it together, pray about it at home. Thank y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, Mr. Wells.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Congratulations on your little one coming too.
Thank you.
Congratulations on you still being here. He was a fighter in
Twelve years.
Yep.
Mr. Joey Sineff, chief?
Good morning, board.
Good evening, chief.
I just wanted to speak on, oh, well, I'm chief of the crew volunteer fire department, and I just want a little clarification. This is mainly for the public with the fire levy tax. We've caught a little backlash from it also, especially since this is our fund drive during Fire Prevention Week. I just want everyone to know, of course, we are all volunteers, but far as the tax levy, the three fire departments has had no increase in the last three years. We knew the shape the county was in, we have not requested an increase, and as to our air tax, we received for the last three years has been the same. We were being funded of the general fund, and now we're getting it out of the tax levy, and that's solely where we're getting the money from. So don't think we're getting a big cut out of this. Air part is just still the same for the last three years. Thank y'all.
Thank you, chief, and thank you for all the volunteers for which I'll do. Thank you very much.
Think this is David Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs. I think Mr. Gibbs and I had a phone call, I'm Steve Bowen, Mr. Gibbs, and he did ask one night was the meeting he wanted to talk about taxes, I believe.
David Gibbs is also known in the community as being Puppy Gibbs.
That's right. Leveys on my taxes is not right. These things should have been put on a ballot and voted by the citizens of Nottaway County. Y'all took it upon yourselves to vote on these levies, which is not right. It's a lot of poor people in this county that cannot afford it, and I'm one of them. I'm 69 years, 70 years old, had to go back to work, 69, because I couldn't live off Social Security. Now y'all keep increasing taxes. How do y'all expect people at my age that can't, not able to go back to work to pay these taxes? It's not right, it should have been voted on by the citizens of this county. The reason I think y'all didn't do that is because you knew it wouldn't have passed. The poor people of this county would have voted against it. We voted for y'all to make good decisions. In my opinion, this is a bad decision for the poor folks of this county. It's not right, and I understand there's going to be more levies on the next year for a new courthouse, new dog pound. It's a lot of animal enthusiasts in here, but it should be done like the old dog wardens of this county done. Keep them five days, nobody claim them, get rid of them. But y'all won't spend $200,000 on a dog killing. That's not right either. I understand the fire department and stuff needs money, but I donated every year to a fire department and emergency squad, $75 every year. You think I'm going to donate this year? No. A lot of other people not going to donate either. So you think you helping them, but actually you going to hurt them. My taxes went up over $300 because of these levies, and it's not right. Like I say, it should have been on, put on a ballot and the people voted on it. I don't see how, what gives y'all the right to make decisions for the citizens of this Y'all took up a petition for names to sign.
Hold on a minute, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Chairman, that's the third time I've heard a telephone ring. I think that ought to be addressed. If they can't silence the phone when they come in, they should leave them out of here.
Go ahead and turn your phones off, everyone.
Silence them anyhow.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Gibbs.
Y'all took, y'all got a petition up so y'all could get on a ballot to get voted in, but it's also a petition to be got up to get y'all out of your seat in this county. And it's enough poor people in this county to sign it, especially in your district. It's a lot of poor people in your district.
They in all the districts, but it's a lot, if you want to refer to them as poor people, I don't like to refer to nobody as being poor, but facts are facts.
Facts are facts. There's a lot in your district. They probably voted for you.
I'm sure they did, but a lot of people, poor riches aren't poor any other way, but I'll address that in a minute, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
But that's the way it is. It should, like these levies y'all going to put on here next year for the courthouse and the dog, it should be put on a ballot and let the citizens of this county vote on it. Y'all shouldn't be able to make the decisions for the people that voted y'all in the chairs that y'all sitting in. It's a whole lot of people that's not going to be able to pay these taxes, these levies. What y'all going to do to them? They want to take the driver's license? Lock them up? I don't mind paying taxes, but a levy is not personal property tax. I don't mind paying my personal property tax, but I'm not paying these levies. Whole lot of us are sick, like me, fighting prostate cancer, but I still got to work every day so I can pay these county taxes y'all keep raising every year. Y'all remind me of Trump. Y'all put yourself above everybody else. Y'all, y'all grown men and women, just like we are. Like the guy said, y'all need to make better decisions than what you making. I also heard if I don't pay them levies, they're going to take my driver's license. That's not going to be a good move.
That is not true, sir. They will not take your driver's license.
Like I say, I'm going to pay my personal property taxes, but I'm not paying these levies, because they are not right. Should have been voted on. They have been put on a ballot, and the citizen voted on it and passed it, I would pay them. But I'm not paying them. There's going to be a whole lot more people other than me not going to pay them either. That's all I got to say.
All right, Mr. Gibbs, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs.
Welcome, Ms. Reese.
Yeah, I think y'all just took it over with the taxes, and you shouldn't, you should put a fee per household for fire and rescue, just like Prince Edward County has. Has it a fee you pay, and they shouldn't have to pay a percentage of what you own for that. That just don't make no sense. That's like right, $300 just for that. That just don't make sense. You shouldn't be giving a percentage on what you own. You might as well sell what you get, so you won't give Nottaway a damn thing. I may sell some of my cars, because I don't need them, and then Nottaway can take it off. That'd be less on that, too. And if you're going to live in one county and going to vote in another county, that just don't make sense, when you're not paying taxes in that county. Got to go 15 miles to vote versus two miles in Burkfield? That don't make sense neither, Nottaway and Prince Edward getting a little crazy. Steve Bowen knows all about it. It's all because of that, I believe. I'm just tired of telling them, yeah, you got to go to vote, and then I got to pay taxes in Nottaway and listen to all this bullshit? I got to be able to vote, and that there going to count it? Don't go send me down the road something that don't mean jack shit to me to vote on, because Prince Edward ain't got nothing to do with me. You just need to get your stuff together and raise money another way instead of trying to hit people trying to retire. You can't retire because you got more bills to pay. So you got to work all your damn life just to pay Nottaway. All I say, get your stuff together to keep things going, and quit spending all this money and then trying to make it off us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reese.
Susan Fee.
I actually could hear my name calling. I was worried about that.
Thank you, thank you for coming.
I have a little trouble here, and, you know, I'm 74. My name is Susan Fee, and I live in Blackstone. I moved in five years ago. My husband, John, and I live there, and we're very happy here. We love it here. But I will be brief and to the point. I made notes because I don't want my mind to go blank. I'm not used to doing this. Okay, so I don't know about all the needs that need to be addressed in Nottaway County, but this one thing I do know, the senior citizens who reside here, who are very limited on a fixed income, are in urgent need of tax relief. Not only are they expected to pay the full amount, but a levy has been imposed on personal property and real estate tax. Seniors have paid, you want one, too, their whole lives, since I know, I was 16 years old when I started car hopping, you know, burgers, drinks, spilled one right in the car one time. I was on roller skates, but I mean, I, I started at 16. I'm 74. I retired recently, but in between that, I was doing chaplain work. I'm a chaplain, and I worked 21 years voluntarily. And if I told you what my Social Security is, you wouldn't be, you would be shocked, although I worked my whole life, not enough to live on, of course. Anyway, so we've been working our whole lives, and we continue to pay every form of tax imposed upon us. And now, with most seniors only on a small Social Security check each month, the strain to make ends meet is significant. I'm asking you to consider the urgent need for assistance in the form of tax relief on seniors' real estate tax. Your senior residents deserve nothing less. Thank you for your attention and your diligent, reasonable response.
Thank you, dear.
Thank you, ma'am.
Gerard Wilson.
Good to see you, buddy.
I'm actually Reverend Wilson as well. I have a couple of issues just want to address real quick. I did listen to all of the constituents who are sitting here. I do want to address this from this perspective. I listened to what the constituents said, I listened to what you all said. So there's always a happy medium. So whenever you addressing something, I'm always dealing with aircraft in my life. That's what I've done since the 80s. So your perspective is, is this, you have to make a decision, they have to make a decision. No matter where you go, things are going to go up. So what you need to determine, what's your priority, and what's more important? The people, like the man said, a dog pound? So you need to take consideration, I know I'm an animal lover myself, have dogs, but as some perspective is, where can you cut costs? And then how can you take the adjustments? Maybe you can use another county as an example, utilize those resources, and maybe shift a couple of things around to help some of the people who may be in need of those resources to help them to pay that taxes. And what am I saying, as someone stated it earlier, if you have a fixed tax, and you know that your tax meets the standards of what the zone is in this county, then it will make suffice of what you need. But you, as a board, have to make the determination of how you going to move those resources around. Some things are important, some things are not important. Some things that you need, you have to have, some things you don't have to have. So I listened to what you all said, I listened to what they said. I won't be long with that, I'm going to leave that right there. The second thing is, a family has contacted me about their family cemetery plot, and this gentleman over here knows what I'm talking about, the sheriff knows what I'm talking about. I won't mention their name, because they're not here tonight, but this gentleman has put a padlock on the access road, and they've been using this road well before I was a child, I've been here, I've lived my whole life, and so forth. I thought that the federal law, they should have access to their family cemetery and their plot. They had contacted the county to know addressing of this road is still locked. It's on Pine Green Road, I won't mention either individual name, but what I'm stating to you is, by federal law, you cannot block an access road, nor can you block a cemetery. I don't care who you are, what they thought when they bought this property. If they didn't understand that, then it's also on the survey plaque. And I'm not understanding why it's still a padlock on this road, why is there a chain on the road as well? So you, as a board, and like the younger gentleman stated, that we are Christians here, I'm assuming, no disrespect to no other religion, but I do want to address that as a personal issue. If you could not access your family plot to bury your loved one, or to visit your loved ones who are in that plot, how would you feel? Number two, when Lakeview was desecrated, what happened? There was an individual who did it. The individual had to pay the cost. It was done immediately. There was no in-between. I feel that this family should get the same just due as well, no matter who they are. So I'm asking you to look into this matter, if you want to speak to me privately. Also, he came, Mr. Bowen, some time ago about this, and he may remember, may not remember.
I do remember.
Yes. So I'm hoping that this can be resolved in a peaceful manner, because the last thing we need is for uproar in the county over something as simple as these people being to access their road, and some of them live here, some of them don't. So I'm asking to plead upon the board to look into this and please help to resolve this matter. Thank you all for your time.
Sir, me personally, if that had happened to me personally, to gain access to a cemetery, and I wasn't being allowed to see, visit my loved one, I'd simply cut the lock and go anyway and deal with the charges when I got them. I don't think a judge in this nation would convict nobody for trespassing if they done that. That's just my two cents.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, to that gentleman's point, me and Mr. Bowen can get together maybe Monday or Tuesday.
Do you have the contact information, Mr. Bowen?
I think Mr. Zody, you've got his number. Mr. Wilson, do you mind giving your number to Mr. Zody before you leave? For point of clarification, and we can set up a meeting, he's a hunter, if you, if you bought a piece of property, and you bought that piece of property, and it's a cemetery on that property, any family member has the right, but it does say you're supposed to at least contact the landowner, it's in the code of Virginia. The access to it, I got to, if it's another access, that's where we may have a problem. Does that make sense? If it's another access to that. But he is, he's making a valid point, and we need to figure out how to get it solved. Am I close to Mr. Attorney? Okay.
Mr. Wilson, we'll get on this first thing, first part of the...
It's the only part way to it, so there's no other way to get to that one. Okay. I think that's where I don't...
We just need to read the code, and make sure it's being compliant.
John, I'll set up something.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
All right, that was our last, delegations from the public. We'll move on to public hearings. Number one is zoning ordinance text amendment, public utilities. Greg, you want to introduce this one?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I signed up to speak.
Mr. Outlaw, you signed up for public utilities?
Okay.
You didn't sign up for general comments. You signed up twice, airport district and public utilities.
So what did I bother to sign up for?
Because we're going to have public hearings, so you're going to speak during the public hearings?
Good, thank you.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Zody.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks. The Planning Commission heard this matter brought to us by a private individual for representing a law firm. And this was to amend our zoning ordinance definition to include, in public utilities, to include the word solar. The Planning Commission heard this last month and voted unanimously to reject it by a vote of eight to zero. The Planning Commission's reasoning, and I don't want to put words in my respective to Planning Commission members' mouths, but was that it's, it's already, it already alludes to being an energy generating source. That's why they, they denied, they recommended denial for this. So Planning Commission, eight to zero, denied this definition change, this amendment. Is that on target, Mr.?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. I haven't received any calls about that, and I don't know if the applicant wishes to speak to this or not. But that's basically the sum of it. Very quick and dirty.
All right, I'll take a motion to open the public hearing for zoning ordinance text amendment, public utilities.
Hello.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
First speaker we've got is Brian Thomas.
I'm Brian Thomas. Full disclosure, I am a member of that said Planning Commission, but I'm also a citizen of Crewe. Proud member of the general public. As a resident of Crewe, I have electrical utility run to my home, and that's being provided by a public utility company called Dominion Energy. And the reason I say that is because the key part of this whole thing is the definition of a public utility. A public utility is a company that provides a useful service to the general public. And that is a very key phrase. I've done a lot of research online for various definitions of public utilities, and they all come up with the exact same wording. It's a company that provides a necessary service to the general public. Something that did not come up in our discussion at the public hearing is the fact that solar facilities and battery storage facilities are not public utilities by definition. Public utilities have a public-facing entity. They serve the public. They provide these services individually to the members of the public. Currently, there are three electric public utilities operating in Nottaway County. I belong to Dominion Energy because I live in the town of Crewe. If I lived in the town of Burkeville, I would be under the public utility of the town of, also of Dominion Energy. If I were in Blackstone, I would be under the public utility of, for electric with the town of Blackstone. And finally, if I lived outside of any of those towns, I would be under the public utility of South Side, Virginia. Yeah, South Side Electric Co-op. After any of these solar facilities are built, there are still gonna be three public utilities operating in Nottaway, Virginia. Those specific three. That's because these solar facilities do not have a public-facing function at all. They don't provide the service to the individual people of this county, or to the businesses. That's all done by these public utilities that provide the infrastructure to get the services to these individual customers. They have billing, they have problem resolutions. If my power goes out, and all of my neighbors seem to have power, who am I gonna call? I'm gonna call Dominion Energy, because they are my electric public utility. I'm not gonna call the solar farm and say, "Hey, can you get one person to my house along with six people from Dominion so that fifteen percent of my electric is, electrical problem is being solved by you?" No. I'm gonna call the company that is providing the service to my house, Dominion. What these solar facilities are, and what the battery storage facilities are, they are vendors of the public utilities. That's it.
They're vendors of what?
They are vendors of the.
To your.
Public utility.
To your point, Mr. Thomas, we don't, our definition doesn't say coal-fired, gas-fired.
No.
Nuclear.
No, it says electricity.
It says electricity.
Electricity is what's coming into all of their customers' facilities. When I look at my bill from Dominion Energy, there's a line in there that says generation. That's a generation fee based on what it costs to generate the power to my house. That's one very individual line item on that bill. All of the other things are handled by the public utility collecting taxes from me. They collect taxes and remit it to the proper authorities that need that tax money. They charge for distribution, obviously, because they're distributing that electric, electricity to my home. You know, so, again, if you add solar facilities and battery storage facilities to this definition, you are incorrect. They are not public utilities. So I urge you, do not muddy the definition, which I think is perfectly acceptable. You know, it tells the types of necessary services that we have.
Mr. Thomas?
So, yeah?
Go ahead and finish up, we're at five minutes.
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Thomas.
All right, Mr. Outlaw. This is zoning tax amendment, public utilities.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Bowen, I apologize for the earlier confusion. I'm gonna speak about solar. There's many aspects to solar. And I'm gonna address you tonight on the moral issue of solar. I'll speak about four things, and then I've got a couple of questions. The four things, the relationship between the Chinese Communist government and the Constitutional Republic of the United States of America. Number two, who produces the majority of solar components and panels? Number three, slavery. And number four, the Civil War. The Council on Geo-Strategy claims that anti-Americanism will remain the foundation of the Chinese Communist foreign policy. That's not gonna change likely. Number two, China dominates the solar panel supply chain, producing over eighty percent of the world's solar panels and their key materials, including polysilicon, wafers, and cells. For example, China controls about ninety percent of the manufacturing capacity for solar wafers, and around eighty-five percent for solar cells, with some estimates being considerably higher. Number three, forced labor is defined by the International Labor Organization Forced Labor Convention as, "All work or service which is exacted from any person under the menace of any penalty, and for which said person has not offered themselves voluntarily." Simply put, that's slavery. The U.S. Department of Labor has determined that forced labor from the UGERS, and I probably didn't pronounce that correctly, and members of other ethnic and religious minority groups is used to produce polysilicon and other products in Communist China. Number four, the Civil War was fought between April 12th, 1861, and April 9th, 1865, largely because of slavery. A hundred and sixty years later, supporting a country, China, that wants nothing less than our total destruction while providing us with products produced by slave labor. So we're right back to supporting slavery that we all probably thought we got out of a hundred and sixty years ago. My two questions to you are these. Are you going to be complicit in this solar debacle? And the second question, are you going to sell out Nottaway because of past poor fiscal management? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Outlaw.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Outlaw.
Mr. Gibbs, you check, is Mr. Gibbs still here?
I think he, he's gone.
Mr. Page. This is zoning tax amendment, public utilities.
Oh, Lord, what does he want?
What does that guy want? Speaking of China, you know what they do over there? They like to tell people what they can and can't do with their land. Just wanted to let you know that. And, you know, if we're worried about where the solar panels are made, everybody should get rid of their cellphone right now. Laptops, microphones, everything else. I'm just saying. So, you know, a solar facility in Virginia is not considered a traditional utility by default. I will concede to that. But its classification can depend on the size and its purpose. Large-scale facilities may be subject to utility-style regulations in Virginia, while smaller systems are often treated as a separate class of property, especially for tax purposes. Organizations that own and operate shared solar facilities are explicitly stated as not being utilities solely because of that operation. However, there are utility-scale solar facilities in Virginia. These are large, ground-mounted systems that generate electricity for the grid. They're typically owned by utilities, or are subject to power purchase agreements with those utility companies, and are considered an important component to the Commonwealth's electricity generation. It just makes sense to make the larger-scale projects labeled as utilities. So I do support that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's our last name on zoning tax amendment, public utilities. I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
Some movements, Jim.
I second.
All in favor?
Ah. Missed one on the paper, maybe?
You missed one on the paper.
That's Mr. Haney? Or who's?
Uh, Jared Burton.
Jared.
Oh. All right, give me your name, sir.
It's Jared Burton.
Jared Burton.
NW Rocky Ford LLC, the applicant in the project that, that gave rise to this, us discussing this particular text amendment. This is in response to the earlier comment, and I think that was just touched on as well, about the term public utility. What I wanted to point out, and this reflects the wording that's in this, the statute for what's known as the substantially in accord determination, which is 15.22232. It's a determination that Planning Commission needs to make in the case of any solar facility being considered. And, or, or that particular issue can be handled in a, in a siding agreement. But I bring that up right here in connection with the public utility discussion because I wanted to point out that the ordinance that y'all passed used that same term of public utility to refer clearly, perhaps among other things, to a private solar facility. It's found in, it's found in your discussion of 2232, which is at, what's the statute? It's section four, 419, four subsection three. And in there, that term is used. And I, I wanted to point that out because I think it's, it kind of shows how that term is a term of art and really should not be understood to mean, you know, Dominion or Rappahannock or Old Dominion.
So on our, on our one approved solar farm, that power goes into a substation. So it's left private ground and gone into a public utility at that substation. Is that a correct way of understanding it?
That, that can, you know, that, that is, that is what happens to those electrons down the road after being generated at a.
Used by the public.
At a solar facility. It's generated on private property, and what is being regulated by this section 2232, and that's also the terminology used in the state statute.
Is Surrey Nuclear Power considered private, or is that, that's owned by Dominion?
I, I would, it's, it's owned by Dominion, which is a private company. But, you know, Lake Anna and those facilities are.
So that is private also, okay.
He said private, but it's being, it's a service offered to the public when the electricity comes on the grid. Exactly. It's available to, the Amish don't even need it. They, I didn't understand a couple of those things saying, it's, it's being offered to the public. It's not a necessity, Mr. Thomas. It's offered to the public. The electricity is offered to the public. So it is a public utility if you partake in it.
Yeah, I mean.
That's my definition of it.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's.
If we take, if we take no action on, in making a change to our definitions, what, what is the cause, or is there, is there a harm?
In, in our view, and, and, you know, I think Mr. Zodi will, will remember in discussions we've had. In our, in our view, the wording of including but are not limited to electricity would by itself already allow an electrical generation use like solar to be considered under, as falling under the definition of public utilities. We, we agree that it made good sense clarification.
Well, if it doesn't say coal-fired, it doesn't say gas-fired, it doesn't say nuclear, and it doesn't, it doesn't need to say solar either. It's just a utility. Just a source of power.
Is that the way you see it, sir?
When we first came to, when we first came to talk to staff, we, we were looking at the definition the way it was, and that's how, that we, we thought that a solar facility of the kind that we were talking about would fall under the word electricity, within your definition.
So electricity. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Jared only asks us, if it doesn't change, we just leave it as is, does that put a stop to this project? That, that, that am performance, what the expectations to have in, in Nottaway County?
We, we would, we would say it does not and should not. You went through the process of amending your zoning ordinance to, to have more provisions on solar, and took that time, and had some definitions added, and spent some time thinking about solar. And I think, you know, I think when, when we were discussing the possibility of there being a clarifying, making it clearer kind of action like this amendment to the definition of public utilities, that it made sense. But it's been our, it's been our position from the beginning that this was a clarifying amendment and not one that was necessary to allow solar.
Okay.
The, the decision and interpretation on that would be, you know, up to county attorney, up to you. And, you know, I, I guess I would ask what your, what y'all's position is on that.
We're gonna have a discussion.
Yeah.
We're having one right now.
I would urge that, given that you had spent the time to, to look at solar and come up with thoughtful regulation of it, and, and, you know, create, among other things, definitions about types of solar that you consider, given that it's now the policy of the county to allow, to regulate solar that comes before you, that you might consider this clarifying amendment to, to bring this use that you thought so much about clearly mentioned in this definition. But we would also urge the view that if, if this definition is not amended in the way that, you know, we have suggested and have talked to staff about, that the solar use would fall under the definition of public utility.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Burton.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we have a motion in a second to come out of the hearing. Does anybody have any discussion?
I think we should.
We can come out of the hearing first.
I, I think we should leave our ordinance the way it is. He says it doesn't bother them, so why would we change it?
Because of clarification. It's clearly, it's clearly a public service. It's a public utility. They're not selling it to somebody privately. It's gonna be used by the consumers of whoever's in that area that uses electricity.
Right.
So why wouldn't we wanna have a clarification of it?
We had a first and a second. We didn't vote to come out of public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You mean come out of.
Come out of the public hearing. Everybody in favor?
Ah.
Hearing number five. Okay, continue, what?
I, I think that, in my opinion, that it should be, it should be. I think that, in my opinion, that it should be, it should be, for clarification, stated that solar is a public utility. It's not gonna be used by anybody privately. It's a public availability. That's the whole purpose of doing it, right, Ms. Amy?
Well, what I'm saying is, as Mr. Chairman Collins said, nuclear, coal-fired.
That's exactly right. So solar should be right included in that.
Should we put all of those in the ordinance?
Nope. So we should just say it's a public utility. For clarification.
So we don't have to list the generation source?
No.
No, we just leave it like it is?
You can leave it like it is, but it be considered a public utility. It's just different wording.
The power, the power's going into the substation.
That's exactly right. It wouldn't prevent it from happening.
No. I mean, he said.
So what difference does it make by the language?
I think leave it like it is. That's what I'm saying. Doesn't make any difference.
If it saves the taxpayers any money, leave it like it is.
All right, so let's figure this. Oh, shoot.
Uh-oh.
And shoot. Is it two different meanings? Yeah, it's all subjective. Okay, really, let's just say that.
That's, I agree.
All right, so are we getting in the weeds? Or do we wait till somebody comes to us and say, okay, this needs clarification? Because right now, the Planning Commission has unanimously said, no, not to change this. But I also understand what you're saying. If it needs clarification, we're ahead of it because we clarified it. So.
Source of power. Everything's a source of power.
Yeah.
Ms. Norton, any thought?
I keep going back to Brian Thomas's explanation and the Planning Commission. They are a large group that have pored over this, and solar is not defined as a public utility until it reaches the substation. Then it becomes a public utility.
Okay. I think I've taken the temperature's board. I don't think there's any, is there any motions or we want to table it? You want to, what do you want to do? Move forward? Next hearing? I don't think there's any action.
I say leave it like it is.
Does anybody offer a motion?
You're looking like a motion to accept the Planning Commission's recommendation?
We could do that.
I so move.
All in favor?
No, wait a minute, I didn't make the motion, Mr. Chairman. I'm just giving you.
I move we accept the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Okay.
Which we need to defy that. What is the point? What was the Planning Commission's recommendation for the public?
Leave it like it is.
Decline specifying a particular type of power as being public utility, because it doesn't specify any of the others.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second this for discussion, since we're going to discuss.
We have a second?
I second. For discussion.
Okay.
So, but to the point, if we're not taking any action, we're taking action.
We're accepting the Planning Commission's recommendation.
But by accepting that recommendation, we're drawing a line. If, I mean, if there's no, if there's no clarification needed.
And we don't need to change anything, we don't need to accept it. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say this before y'all vote on it, just.
We're not going to vote on anything.
Okay. All right, well, let me just say this, because I think it's a, and I'm not, I'm not trying to go against what the Planning Commission has recommended, but anytime you have some type of policy or procedure, sometimes they'll say, here are examples, but not limited to. And you could name 15 power things if you want to. What does that hurt? I mean, I don't really understand that. Is that wrong? That's the reason they use the terminology "to include," but not limited to.
Exactly.
So you could put examples, and then 20 years, there might be another example. We don't know about it.
Probably will be.
Right. I mean, I don't know. I just don't want to make it complicated, but I don't want to.
So I don't, we've got a motion in a second for discussion. Would anybody like to withdraw their motions?
Not I.
I didn't make the motion, so I can't withdraw the motion.
Second for discussion, Mr. Rourke?
I'll withdraw the second.
Okay. Will anybody second? Mr. Ingram?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? All right, we're five-o, accepting the recommendation of the.
Mr. Chairman, I've got a question for point of clarification for me.
Okay.
We addressed the solar issue when it was presented to us, to the public, but when is it our turn to go back and address the tax issue that was first presented to us? Because I'm over here jumping at the bit and we.
Me and you both.
We was not able to.
Okay. So you want to go back to D. and address delications from the public?
Yes, sir. I feel like that, that, we owe that to them.
Yes, sir.
So we're in public hearings now. You want to finish those so that those folks can be finished, and then we'll go back?
Sure. Okay.
Okay. So we've cleared number one. We're at number two, solar application of Burke Junction. And this one, this one has just two speakers.
And that is, what is it?
Actually, just one now.
You want Mr. Zodi to introduce it?
Yeah, introduce it, Mr. Zodi.
Okay, good evening again. What we have before us is a request by Don and Jean Knight to cite a three-megawatt solar facility on approximately 30 acres on a 120, 21, 120 and 121 acre parcel. This is south of Burke's Junction Road, southwest of town of Burkeville. And there's about nine, I believe eight or nine adjacent property owners for this particular project. Currently, it's an empty field. It's been lost years ago. Since the first adjacent property owners notification went out, Stafford, not a phone call, not an email. With tonight's hearing, staff did not receive a telephone call nor an email regarding this particular project. The Planning Commission heard this on September 7, September 16, excuse me. And with regards to the 15-22232, the Planning Commission did agree that it was in substantial compliance with our comprehensive plan. Secondly, with regards to the special exception application itself, the Planning Commission voted 7-1 to approve it, to recommend approval to you all. Now, the unique, this site, in my opinion, is a very unique one, just like Mr., for Inverness Farms, the Hanes, very unique. We have to treat each application as a unique request. This site is unique in and of its topography. You have a railroad going around the side of Norfolk Southern, and then you also have a railroad going around it, bordering the town of Burkeville. One, the one that goes around, around Burke's Junction Road, that's Norfolk Southern, and it's above grade, so you really can't see it from adjacent properties. You have to stand on the high point on the east side of the site, I believe east side, and in order to see a manufactured home, one or two parcels away.
Okay. And so you had no public comment?
No, sir.
No interaction?
No, sir.
Mr. Zodi? I'm going to ask for a motion to open a public hearing.
Some move.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Oh, oh, oh.
Well, you want to say something?
We have only one public speaker.
Right.
And Ms. Heculma, you want to address?
I would like to present a brief presentation of the project. I didn't know I signed up for a public hearing.
We didn't have you on the agenda, so.
She.
Yeah, I don't have to, but.
Let's have.
She does represent Hexagon.
Yeah, so let's, I'll add you to the sheet so you can speak. So, Mr. Page?
Ask her so far. Y'all gonna get tired of hearing from me tonight, huh?
Yep.
Not already. It sounds to me like y'all got a planning commission problem. On every solar issue, they've come back zero to eight, zero to eight, zero to eight, zero to eight, and this board.
This one's seven to one.
Oh, seven to one now. This board has went the opposite direction, so it doesn't seem like they have the pulse of the board. You pass the ordinance, they voted it down. You pass the appeal, they voted it down. They wanted you to attach what I really call a fruitless, unenforceable item onto, onto an approval that they have to have some third-party approval, which is a civil matter due to a deed issue, so, which is really outside their realm and yours. So, you know, and then I was really disappointed to hear Mr. Ingram, and I have no problem with you, I respect you and I appreciate you, say, oh, well, that solar project only brought $10,000 a year in. So you beat up the big ones because they're too big, and the little ones are getting beat up because they're not bringing in the revenue to reduce the tax burden on the citizens. So where is the middle ground? Where's it at? Because Main Street is hurting, and jobs are going to start being affected with more tax raises. So this is a small project that allows you to get it under your feet, allows you to get some projects underneath you, see how it works. We should do everything we can to accommodate it. Just remember, you guys put those setback waivers in for small projects like this. And I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
All right, then we have Esther Reckelman. She's from Hexagon Energy, and they are the developer for the project.
Yeah, Esther. Yeah. Good evening, Chairman Collins, members of the board. As you all know, my name is Esther Reckelman. I'm the senior project developer for the three-megawatt Burke Junction solar project. I want to thank Mr. Zodi for his short presentation of our project, as well as really all the work he's put into this project over the last few months, helping us put this together and bring it in front of you today. And I was gonna, I have a whole presentation prepared to talk about many different details regarding the project, but I want to make sure, there's a lot of other things that I know you have to get to this evening, so I'm gonna just try to keep this as brief as I can, get to the major details, and then let y'all take a vote on it. For a brief overview of our company, as you all know, Hexagon was founded and is headquartered in Charlottesville, Virginia. We've been in operation for over 10 years and have been developing small projects like these all over the country, and we have several projects, both small and large, that are in operation across the state. I think you're also all familiar with the landowner of this property by now. Don and Jean Knight, they're lifelong residents of the county, and Don is here with us this evening. They bought this property about 20 years ago, throughout which time it has operated as a timber farm, with the last clearing occurring in 2023. And when Hexagon approached the Knight family about developing this portion of their property, back in 2020, actually, they thought of a small solar facility as a great way to diversify the income stream on their property while also protecting it from further, more intensive development down the road. Many people throughout the development of this project have noted that this project is ideally located, or this property is ideally located for a solar facility, from a visual perspective, just given how hidden away it is. Mr. Zodi hit on one point regarding this. He mentioned the railroad lines, one on the north boundary, the other one on the southeastern boundary of the property. The one on the northern boundary is actually above grade, so it makes it virtually impossible for anyone on Burke's Tavern Road to even see what's going on in the property. The second factor is that it actually doesn't, the property doesn't even have road frontage with Burke's Tavern Road. There's a thin parcel that's owned by a different landowner, Mr. Bernard Farah, that separates it from Burke's Tavern Road. And overall, I think, you know, we've put a lot of thought into making sure that environmental concerns are being addressed, so we have 200, over 250-foot setbacks from field delineated perennial streams and general wetlands. Mr. Knight is clearly a steward of his land. He actually kept the vegetation intact during his last timbering to make sure that, you know, the wetlands are healthy, and we're going to continue to protect those wetlands throughout the lifetime of the project. We are not impacting them. On top of that, we've also designed robust stormwater erosion and sediment control features on the site to make sure that water quality and quantity is not impacted by this, in those wetlands, is not impacted by this project. One of my colleagues, Megan, is here with us this evening. She's actually the engineer that designed these stormwater facilities, so if you have any specific questions about them, please, please ask her. She's more than happy to answer them. And really, the point that I want to address the most is our attempt to do community outreach regarding this project, and that'll tie into the question of these waivers that the Planning Commission, as you know, brought up. So we've maintained active community engagement regarding this project throughout the recent months. Initially, we contacted all 10 adjacent property owners with letters providing them with project information and inviting questions and discussion regarding the project. I personally conducted two separate door-to-door canvassing campaigns to all 10 of these adjacent property owners in May and June, and I left notes and contact information and information about the project at their door, if they were not home when I, you know, tried to reach out to them. Our last round of letters inviting discussion and questions went out about two weeks before the Planning Commission hearing. Of the neighbors I was able to meet within person, one expressed support for the project. Other four folks did not seem to have any questions or concerns at the time that I talked to them. I also want to add some color into what was included into those packets, so in each of our outreach letters or outreach packets, we had information about the project in writing, including acreage of the project, as well as a map showing what the project looked like and where it was. We did our best to outline not just where the panels would be, but also where the person receiving that letter, where their property was in relation to the project itself, because I understand that if you don't read a map every day, it might be hard to understand where you are in space if you're looking at that picture. I recognize that not everybody might have been home to receive these letters, but like I said, we did our best to leave notes at the door with our contact information and really invite people to chat with us if they had questions or concerns. In addition to that, we hosted a community meeting at the Burkeville Fire Station on July 22. We sent personal invitations to 14 nearby neighbors before this, and also advertised through the courthouse, the county website, as well as in the Courier Record two weeks in a row, and 11 people did attend it, though none were adjacent neighbors as far as we knew. And people asked very thoughtful questions, and overall, I thought the meeting was very well-received and informative. And then lastly, as you know, we are requesting that the setbacks be reduced for this project, so we're requesting a reduction to 400-foot setbacks from habitable dwellings and 150-foot setbacks from adjacent property lines. Last month, the Planning Commission raised the question of whether we would need waivers from landowners where we've proposed a reduced setback. We've reached out to these neighbors on numerous occasions, as I said, and they have not voiced their concerns about the project, presumably because it is pretty visually hidden from them. Also, a waiver is not necessary because under the Nottaway County zoning ordinance, Sections 419-4 and 419-8, the board has the authority to make exceptions to setbacks based on parcel dimensions and topography. And I won't bore you with reading the entire project condition, but we have proposed the project condition that Mr. Zodi did tell me he provided you all. It's the first one in those voluntary project conditions that addresses this point. It will keep the setbacks from rights, public rights of way the same at 300 feet, but it reduces the setbacks from habitable dwellings to at least 400 feet and from adjacent property lines to at least 150 feet. I think the question of this waiver comes down to the issue of good-faith outreach efforts and how to balance this with property rights. I completely understand and agree with the desire to protect other people's properties, and I believe that with these requested setbacks, as well as with the vegetative buffer that we are proposing on the site, others will not be impacted given the project's hidden location. We have also demonstrated what I believe is a sincere effort to gather neighbors' input on the project. Given these factors, I think it's necessary to consider the importance of property rights in this decision. I don't think it's essential to have the written approval of several neighbors, all of whose residences are at least 400 feet away from the project fence line, for the Knights to be able to do this on their property. I think, given that, these reasonable justifications for the proposed setbacks, we request your approval of the project subject to the proposed conditions. And like I said, I had much more information that I was going to present to you today about the various design details of the project. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, should you have them, about those design details, but I feel like we've been through this so many times about this project that I just wanted to keep it short and sweet, and I very much appreciate you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reckelman. The members, any questions for Ms. Reckelman?
I would like to make a comment. She was the best presenter that I've seen at the Planning Commission. In fact, I complimented her, if you remember.
She should be a politician just about.
Well, I mean.
You got that?
This lady.
All right, Mr. Zodi, can you come back up?
This lady told it like it was, which I don't get from other people.
Let it reflect it.
We're in a public hearing.
Show that you supported that.
We're coming out of, I need a motion to come out of a public.
Move to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Okay, Mr. Zodi, so my understanding is that we've got a 7-1 approval from planning, but they've added the condition of a waiver.
Yes.
We've heard from the developer and yourself that there's been no response from neighbors in regards to this location?
That's correct.
Negative or positive? Negative or positive? It's just.
None.
The information, you feel confident the letters have gone out?
Yes, sir. They're certified mail.
And Ms. Reckelman has been on front borders and has talked to people when you had a public meeting?
Yes.
What's your, what's your opinion of the waiver?
Well, my opinion of the waiver is that we need to adjust our solar ordinance to make it less vague because when we say waivers, we don't say written or verbal. We say waivers. And I think that needs to be corrected quite honestly.
I think it needs to be corrected quickly because we have a bigger project with 200 adjacent landowners as opposed to 10.
And I'm gonna amend the agenda on Tuesday night to add that, for that discussion.
But in this particular case.
In this particular, in this particular case, I don't see the rise to seek out waivers from adjacent property owners when she's clearly stated on the record that she has not received any response or people were not concerned.
Not received any at your office?
No, sir. None at all.
Okay.
And staff does support this. Like Hanes, I feel like it's an excellent project. I want people to remember, we have to look at each case as an individual.
That's right. Each case is an individual project. You didn't set up a motion in here, did you, Mr. Zodi?
No, I just, just to prove everything I say.
All right. So what we'd be looking for is to accept planning's recommendation for the Hexagon Burke Junction solar, but we would exclude the waiver requirement.
Mr. Chairman, yes, I have a question on that waiver. Okay, so if the planning commission is recommending a waiver, and that be kind of the condition of the, is, in other words, did the planning commission, did you get the sense that the planning commission and Mr. Ingram were there to, is it a hard no without the waiver?
I don't.
Well, I think the planning commission is trying to look out for the joining landowners.
Right.
Really. And, you know, we've had a discussion about it. Somebody can say, oh, yeah, well, I talked to everybody and they're okay. But if you don't have it in writing, you don't know.
Here's the problem I got with it. They were sent certified mail. Norfolk and Southern is, they are an adjacent landowner. They are never gonna sign saying, yeah, we don't have no problem with it.
Right.
But they didn't come in opposition to it. Norfolk and Southern is never gonna come forward. If we say that it's gotta be a signature required for the waiver, then it can't go through because Norfolk and Southern is not coming.
What I was trying to say, Mr. Toth, is.
I'm bold, by the way, Mr. Ingram. Thank you.
You must have tooth up here. My deal is, and, you know, I've made the comment, I think I'm gonna vote for this because of the way it is and the way that young lady presented it. I mean, I'm telling you, it's just, it's a total different atmosphere than what I've heard from other people.
What we need to know is when Ampliform comes in here with these 200 adjacent parcels.
We gonna trick it them one by one. We gonna beat this one down now.
Right. And Mr. Smith is next to Mr. Jones, and Mr. Jones is gonna do the solar project. And Mr. Sisna says, you're gonna be 300 feet.
Right.
Right.
Or you're gonna be 1,200 from my house. And then the next one down there says, well, I don't mind. You come and use your land. You can use your land. That's fine. But, so we need to have that understanding. I want everybody that's involved in these projects to have the opportunity to protect what's theirs.
Exactly.
And use what's theirs. And that's the fine line that we're trying to walk.
That was my concern, Mr. Chairman, as well, simply because if the recommendation is coming about, speaking to the waiver, I don't think, it's too much concern there, too much green grass there that is, that is growing, again, where you have a situation, or we set the precedent by ignoring a waiver request from the planning commission. I think if this is gonna be a motion, just my, me personally, I would say that either you approve it or you don't approve it and exclude the waiver until we can address this waiver issue.
Approve it or don't approve it and exclude?
Exclude the waiver request.
Because of the language.
For this particular one.
Yeah, for this one, simply because we need to address the waiver. Let's put it on the.
Exclude the waiver request.
Yes.
The request.
Yes.
From the, from the adjacent landowner?
From the planning commission.
Oh, okay.
The language, it's still working, it's still a working project.
And with this being an understanding, the work session, we address this waiver next month.
Yes.
I would like to add one last thing before I forget. I do have eight conditions, and I also want to include Hexagon's conditions that they submitted to you all.
Okay.
Everybody wants a condition. Is that this, Mr. Zodi?
Yes, sir.
You should have, you should have been a handout, maybe.
Yes.
It's gonna be in your stack?
Let me find my stack. And my glasses.
Probably in that pile right there, though.
It's in this pile.
Right there.
I think we're, we're getting ready, we're almost there, Esther. We're okay. The, so what we're looking for is to have a motion to approve Burke Junction solar, excluding the waiver requirement, including staff's recommendation along with Hexagon's voluntary recommendations.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ingram, did you want to make that motion, sir?
You're putting me on the spot, aren't you? Like I said, this is the, I haven't seen one like this. And I was very impressed with the young lady. And believe it or not, our move, we approve this request.
I second it.
I knew everybody was gonna try to second it when talking about solar.
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Knight, you have your project.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram.
Oh, thank her.
She got it.
Okay, we've got a request to amend the agenda. I'm hesitant to do it because we've still got nine speakers to go on our next public hearing. Mr. Toth requested to amend the agenda to go back and answer, have some discussion on delegations of the public in regards to the tax situation. Are you willing to set a time limit, Mr. Toth?
Oh, for myself?
For the whole thing, like maybe 10 minutes?
Yeah, I'd say. 10 minutes would be fine. Yep.
All right, need to make a motion to amend the agenda.
So maybe.
Second.
All in favor?
Second. Aye. Aye.
Okay, we're going back, and this is gonna go back to everybody that spoke during delegations from the public. So we had board members wanted to speak about those speakers before everybody left. And I'll open the floor to discussion. Mr. Toth?
Yes, sir. So, so Mr. Gibbs, I think is still in my district, was for a very long time. He referred to some people of Nottaway County being poor. And while that may be true, it's not all true. Because one can be poor and riches and, or very wealthy and riches. But here's the whole deal I have. All along the way, I got not the first phone call, visit from anybody in my district to come up with the sources, the revenue needed to fund specifically EMS. State code says that the county shall provide a public service. One example, a resident, after we, after this levy was imposed, came to me and said that his $350,000 worth of assets is now gonna cost him $151 more a year. Well, that seems a pretty cheap price to pay for an ambulance when you need them. But the public, including myself, is a little bit negligent to the knowledge of, the EMS is about 97 to 98, what is it, Mr. Rog? 98% paid. They're not volunteer. It's north of 95%.
Yeah, it's almost 100%.
And it has been that way for 15-plus years. So I have, I have said this from the beginning. I talked to Mr. Collins about it. If you've got organizations such as Herditch Hall, and just say you've got 250 residents in Herditch Hall, and 200 of them don't own any personal property or real estate in Nottaway County, they are nine times more likely to need the assistance of the EMS, but they're not contributing to it. We are the ones who have personal property and real estate in Nottaway County. And if somebody owes $500 and can't pay it, and owes $500,000 and can't pay it, there's no difference. The fact of the matter is, it can't be paid. We owe, state code said, and morally, fundamentally, ethically, we owe the citizens of Nottaway County an ambulance if they need it. Sad to say, they are paid, they're not volunteered. The funds, it's gotta be raised some sort of way to make payroll, to put tires, to put fuel into ambulances. It's sad, but true. I was jokingly with a fellow in my district that came to my residence about this, but it is true. And it goes back to the less fortunate people. I'm not gonna call them poor. This guy was raising cane about how much his personal property went up from the levy. For those who have much, much is required. So for those that don't have as much, a lesser amount is required. Chairman Collins and myself talked about imposing a per head. Take the $2.2 million needed to fund this or thereabout, and divide that over 15,800 residents. It comes to about, what do we figure?
$140.
$140 a head. Well, here's the truth of the matter. My prediction is, no, if it's the truth of the matter, it's not my prediction. There's a lot of people who will not pay that. How do you collect it? And if you don't collect it, you cannot pay the EMSs to come. If you put it on a tax levy, there's no driver's license gonna be taken. But I dares to say, and I'm not an attorney, if you don't pay it by the third year, the county will foreclose it on a court high steps. That's the only way to collect it. Until we can find out another way to tax the people in the places such as Herditch Hall, which I might make mention, too. If you take an ambulance ride, you or and your insurance company is billed for that, so you do pay. So one man may think, why and how are they double-dipping? I ask that very question. Their tax, their, their collection rate for the ambulance service is about 54%, meaning that there's a large portion of that that's not collected. So they have to come up with those funds somewhere. It's sort of like having insurance on your house. All the insurance in the world ain't worth a damn till you need it. But when you need that ambulance, you wanna know that there's three fully-staffed ambulances 24 hours a day in Nottaway County that's gonna come to your beck and call. Same way with fire. We've never not had somebody come to a resident to put out a structural fire in my, my remembrance of life. They come in. They are volunteers. And hats off to them. I wish the EMS could continue to do it, but it came over professionalism. It came with some medical training, and it just got to the point that it wasn't like that. But I don't want to refer to somebody being taxed to death or the even thought of it being put on a ballot, because nobody in their right brains would vote for a tax increase. Nobody wants a tax increase. Most people are not gonna look at it like a common-sense person to see the necessity of the service to vote for the tax increase. That's the reason us five had to vote for it. And I hope next year we can do something different. As far, I'm gonna end this by saying this. As far as the courthouse complex that's being imposed on Nottaway County, it's something I can say, I can kick the ball backwards and say it should have been well, well-maintained or better maintained in previous years. It's really easy for me to come up with a lot of money if I don't pay my bills. I can bank a lot of money if I don't pay nobody. And, and that should have been addressed there. Now we've got a state-appointed judge, and I got nothing against that judge, that says that we must do it. We don't have any choice.
All right, Mr. Toth.
That's all for me.
Okay, Mr. Rog.
But that won my 10 minutes. That was eight and a half.
Well, I think you had a split to 10 minutes.
Oh, I did.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, first, first and foremost.
More than 10 minutes.
All right. First and foremost, I did a Facebook Live earlier in the year before I had my stroke, and I forewarned about taking it out on the volunteers. If y'all want to point the finger at anybody, do it right here. Do it right now. I did that. I bring it up to this board about giving a tax levy for these men and women so they could protect us. They could protect us. All my life, I've dreaded the day I need to make a phone call, for love on even myself. Y'all see that? Y'all see that? That's my normal hand gesture. You know why I'm able to show you that? Because they were there, and I didn't die in my bed at home. That's what, that's why. And that was before I had my stroke, ladies and gentlemen. So I want you to understand that. The need that you have, I want to make sure it's covered, period. Now, please do not take it out on these men and women, because what's going to happen, and it was, it was, it was a fear of mine, and it came true. Ever since that fire behind Blackstone Walmart and that tax levy was going in place, people have been talking and talking and talking and taking shots at the firefighters. You know what? Let every volunteer stop today. Lock the doors and walk. You ain't seen a tax increase yet. Let them lock the doors, turn the keys over to the town, turn the keys over to Nottaway County. You ain't seen a tax increase yet. It's gonna take not millions, but millions and millions to get them fire trucks staffed. Because then you're gonna fall under state codes, additional state codes, and additional regulations. You wanna be mad at somebody, be mad at the legislators and the state of Richmond and federal government that force these requirements down onto local government. That's whose fault it is. It ain't our fault. But damn it, as long as I'm sitting here, y'all are gonna have an ambulance come for you. Y'all are gonna have a fire department, a fire truck come for you. And that's health, safety, and welfare, and I've been consistent on that. But please, stop taking that out on these volunteers. Because when you're kicking them in the teeth, what's gonna happen is you're not gonna have what somebody else want to come and volunteer. We just did a tax reduction in hopes to draw volunteers in here for the volunteers. You know why? It's about $65,000 for one ambulance guy. It don't matter if they're just the driver. Now, let's start talking about paramedics. Now you're hitting 75, $80,000. And then let's talk about dual role, EMT and firefighters. Now you're hitting $90,000. Should I keep going? And that's one person. Y'all have got to understand, I don't like it either. I still have not opened my tax bill, y'all. I don't want to have another stroke. But that's the truth of it. So that's the first thing I want to address, is please stop taking it out on the volunteers before you turn around and see the additional need for taxes to staff those fire departments. The, the other thing is, I'd like to ask the board, we see now where the citizens have some concerns, and we don't get better feedback than our citizens.
Correct.
And, and I know we had discussed about some facts and data. Here's our facts and data, right here, in front of us tonight. That's our facts and data. We start with them. So if we can put this on our work sessions every month for any new information to address this tax levy, it's kind of like unfinished business. We can leave this on it. If something new pops up, bam, we got a slot ready for it. We talk about it, we address it, it stays in front of us. Ladies and gentlemen, we have six, seven months, and guess what? Your next budget's gonna be right here, and y'all are gonna be talking to us again. And you're looking at what? We don't know, yet. Okay, so that being said, I had three motions and, that I wanted to make tonight, right after this. And I had spoke to the chairman about it. And some, is it attainable? Yeah, some of it is. And I'll share with y'all what they were, and one of them.
All right, that's, we're about, we're done 10 minutes, and Ms. Norton would like to have a few words.
All right. Okay.
Ms. Norton?
But, so ladies and gentlemen, y'all follow up with our, with our comments, you know, at the end of the meeting. If you don't want to stay, I understand.
Well, we've got, we've got nine people still want to do their public.
Right, but we'll have our comments at the end of the meeting, too, where we may can address some of the stuff for you.
I want to address, we were given a revenue and comparison, population comparison for 2025, and it's eight counties. Nottaway County's real estate rate and personal property is not the highest. Nottaway County's one penny generates $125,000. That's two EMTs. That's it. One penny. There are, in those nine counties, Mecklenburg's one penny is $867,000 because of their population. So our one penny has to go a long, long way. And I understand wholeheartedly the hardship on the senior citizens. We have been working with the Commissioner of Revenue. The statute and the code allow us to have a senior citizen reduction. But it's a two-year process to get it done. It's not gonna be immediate. And it's a lengthy process.
It has to be funded.
And it has to be funded, the money we're losing from that. But we are working on something for the plight of the senior citizens. And I'll end that, within all of this data we received, Nottaway County compared to the other eight counties has 15,642 people. The median income in Nottaway is $62,161. The poverty rate is 18.9%. Citizens over age 65 is 18.5%, and veterans are 7.6%. So you've got about 23% that are lower level, lower income. We are trying our best to work through the process, through the code. We can't just go in there and say, okay, Treasurer, okay, Commissioner, cut out this person's, give them $200 off. We have rules and procedures and codes we have to follow. But we are trying our best to do that. Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna hold my.
Me, too.
Till the end.
I'll hold mine.
And I got some more to say at the end, too, believe you me.
All right, we'll get back on the agenda. And this is going to be citizen input, so this is no, nothing from the planning commission. In the book, there is a resolution from the Nottaway County School Board. Would the school board like to?
Mr. Chairman, that's that resolution, but I would like to say this. This is what we advertised to, for this public hearing, to hear the citizens' opinions regarding the Nottaway County Public Schools' request for permission to sell the former Burkeville Elementary School building. Burkeville Elementary School building and retain the proceeds for capital improvement projects. So I just want to make sure everyone understands what, what was advertised and, um, and this was.
So the other governing body has passed a resolution. And the code of Virginia allows them to ask us to, to surplus it and we take possession of it, or they can ask us for permission to sell it. And then they've also asked to retain the proceeds for capital improvements at the school. So we're going to have an open, a public hearing and these are going to be some folks who are going to talk to us about what they think should happen with the school. And then we'll have discussion after we close the public hearing and see if we're going to make any decisions about that.
That's right, you can vote then if you want to.
So I'd like a motion.
I moved open the public hearing for citizen input on the, uh, former Burkeville Elementary property.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. First one, we have Mayor Gerald Smith. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for coming to speak.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
All right. As you say, I'm the mayor of the town of Brookville. The town of Brookville is a small town, everybody knows, we're a real small town. But we would like to be served at the table to leg everybody else in, in this county. We always put it to last. We're a one mile by one mile town, but we have a big heart in, in the town of Brookville. So when y'all, when the school board made the decision to sell that, that building, Brookville should have been the first person that they sat down with, not only just me or the council should have been notified that they were getting ready to sell that building or who they want to sell it to. But did you also know Brookville has some stake in, in, in that ground over there? We have a well over there, we have a sewer system there that runs through that, through that property. Brookville has stake in it and it's a historical landmark.
On the four, on the 44 acres, Burkeville has infrastructure?
Say it again.
Burkeville has infrastructure on the 44 acres?
Yes, yes.
I didn't know that.
We have a nice well there. It puts out a lot of good water there. So we have sewer system that was put in back in the, in the, in the early eighties, which we still, still are using and still pumping to the, um, to the prison over there. So I would like that y'all to do, to take consideration before you go selling that building to understand that Brookville has stakes in, in that building. We have a public, um, it's a, uh, have public, um, access there for its water and sewer and we have this historical value there. We can't, we just can't throw it away because if we sell it off to somebody, that's exactly what's going to happen. They're going to throw it, just throw it away. I don't know how much that means to you, but Brookville means a lot to me. I was born and raised there. Left the military and came back here after 31 years to live in a small town. That's where my heart is at, in that small town. That's why I ran for the, for the, for a public office, to see that town go forward. And me becoming mayor, yeah, it was, it was a historical moment there too, but I don't need no recognition for that. I want to see my town progress. I want to see the people being taken care of. And that's what I'm going to do as long as I got breath in my body, is take care of the people of, of the town of Brookville. So if y'all feel that way, you know, and I'm not saying y'all, maybe I'm addressing the, the, the wrong committee, if the school board feel that, they don't need to bring us to the table to, to, to talk to us about it, then shame on them because we got people in, in the town that got kids as well. All right? So stop putting us at the, at the bottom of the, of the totem pole. We trying to grow and trying to be something if I go everybody else in, in the town of Brookville.
Yes, sir.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, I know, I know, I know we are in the middle of a public hearing and feel free to continue the public hearing if you like, but I like to put a motion on the table to, a motion to table this until we can discuss this further with the town of Brookville. I did not know they had infrastructure running.
I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Really? Really?
So we, we're tabling it, we're not going to take no action, what do you mean? We're still going to listen to y'all. Absolutely.
And that's why I was saying, we, I know we're in the middle of a public hearing, we can still continue that.
Can't vote during a public hearing? And these people came here to speak and they just sat and, and have sat here very patiently. And so we want to hear from them.
Yes.
And then when we finish the public hearing, that's, we can do other things. Okay? All right. Mr. Reynolds? Registrar Reynolds? Thank you for coming this evening.
Thank you, Chairman Collins. Uh, Chairman Collins, Administrator Bourne.
Sir.
Voter supervisor. Good to see each of you. A lot of what I was going to say, um, came from the mayor. And Mr. Mayor, I thank you. His comments are expressive of my own. The entire discussion of the building, I'm out of. I have nothing to do with that. But the building holds, houses the office of the General Registrar of Notaway County, which I believe is a state-funded office as well as a county-funded office. It appears to me that someone's authority was overstepped. I look at you folks as the entity to handle any kind of fiduciary actions, take receipts of any revenue that occur in Notaway County. I looked at you folks to be the entity that would enter into any contractual agreements with anyone dealing with property owned by the county. Now maybe I'm just uninformed and maybe you folks actually relinquished that authority to the school board to do in your stead. But if you didn't, it appears to me, as I believe the mayor is saying, that someone overstepped their boundaries entering into a contractual discussion that you folks weren't a part of initially. But again, if you were, I digress. The conversation about where the office of the General Registrar would go amazingly was done without the General Registrar in the room. I find that interesting. I am not in elected office. I, as I tell some folks, um, I applied for a job at McDonald's and they chose me because I was the best French fryer guy. But I do think as a human and as a citizen and as a tax paying citizen of Notaway County, um, the office of the General Registrar, as well as the office of the mayor of Brookville, should be better respected. I don't know Mayor Smith's point of view, but I'm, I have been in different situations that have caused inappropriate conduct and speech. Chairman Collins, I believe you know what I'm speaking on. But this is not my, this is not my plight tonight. It appears that there could also be alternative reasons for things occurring with this piece of property. That could be something that I only have in my, my imagination, but it does appear that way. I only ask that you five members and county administrator, I ask you to please show the county that you folks are in charge. You were voted to be in charge, not other entities. This discussion about my office being moved was done so without the electoral board. They hired me. How could something like that occur? In any case, um, there will be others that will probably give you some historical information about this building, as the mayor attempted to do. I know there, there seems to be a, a motion afoot to remove some of, some of history from this country. It's impossible. The history is why you sit there. The history is why I stand in front of you. You can't eradicate it, no matter what you think of it or don't like about it. It is what it is. I know you folks have a lot on your plate. I know this, this proposition involves revenue coming your way. But I also know that you require revenue for bigger issues. If I understand with just what I heard, the revenue from this sale, this proceeds of the, of sale for this property, it's not going to help the county, the courthouse complex, but the school board. I am not trying to hamper any of the children in this county from getting the best quality education possible. I just said, don't do it at the, at the expense of the history of the county or at the expense of the town of Brookville or the office of the General Registrar. Thank you folks for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Jackie A. Green, August. Good evening, Father.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chair, Chairman, Board Members and other county officials present. My name is Dr. Jackie Green August and I'm here as a voice of preservation. I am personally thankful to the Presbyterian Historical Society for their time and effort in helping me to clarify and honor the origins of 507 Ingleside Street and the people it uplifted. Did you know that before 507 Ingleside was known as Brookville Elementary, it was a site of a vision shaped by hope and determination? Let me paint a picture. After the Civil War, the Northern Presbyterian Churches established a Freedmen's Committee. Though led primarily by white members, they worked to serve freed black communities. Their mission was to create churches and schools, hire black teachers and pastors and provide access to education and uplift newly emancipated people. During this time, down the road in Amelia, the African-American Russell Grove School became overcrowded, prompting the establishment of a new facility in Brookville, which was named Ingleside Seminary in 1892. Russell Grove Presbyterian Church and the school had grown beyond its capacity and its leadership sought a new building to accommodate more students. Ingleside was constructed to serve the black students from Amelia and the surrounding counties, offering more room and expanded educational opportunities. The Presbyterian Church paid for operations and maintenance. That's salaries and maintenance of the building. But it was the community itself that supplied everything else. The land, the timber, the nails, the labor and all of the above. The faith that the knowledge could change lives. Together, they built not just a school, but a monument of resilience, faith and self-determination. Here in Notaway, the mission took root through the, through the community's generosity. Republican candidate for the House of Delegates, William Horace Ash and his wife, Susan B. Sally Miller Ash. Both African-Americans were consistently identified as teachers and landowners at the same time the 20 acres was established. And county records show that the parcel number 17-108, recorded owner, Notaway County School Board is located on 20 acres at Miller Street. Now known as Ingleside. The matching acreage and their direct service to Ingleside as teachers and donators make them the most plausible local contributors. But during the era of integration, that legacy was stripped away. The property was absorbed by the school system without any known compensation to the families or to the church that had built it and sustained it. Like many other African-American historical schools across Virginia and in Notaway, Ingleside's name was changed and its history was erased. And the story of the people who created it had been buried underneath a new identity. Allow me to give you examples. A.G. Richardson. Ingleside Elementary, which is now Brookville Elementary. Watson School, which is now Crew Primary. Mount Nebo. Hendersonville, which I do now believe is the school board building. Fergusonville. Luther H. Foster School, which was Notaway High School, but now Notaway Intermediate. This is not just a loss of land, it is a loss of recognition, of memory and of community justice. Yeah, even though erasure, erased, the spirit of this place endured. Like much in 1892, the property of 507 Ingleside once again serves the community. The registrar, the food pantry, training center for the Medical Reserve Corps, state police, county emergency shelter, church services, fitness classes and health education. This space has been defunct for eight years, but it has become a place of hope and learning for our Notaway community. It stands as one of the few remaining places where residents can gather, learn and receive the help they need to live healthy and dignified lives. If this property is sold or closed to community use, in that case, we will repeat the same injustice over and over again. Look at the old Blackstone Primary. Why not sell that? We haven't talked about surplusing that. Erasing once again what was built by the hands and hearts of all of these people in here. The 507 Ingleside property has the potential to become a vibrant place that has not only honored its founders and descendants, but continues their mission in a way that they could only have dreamed of. Let us not lose this opportunity. Let us ensure that what people built remains for these people, the people of Notaway County. We're not just saving walls and windows, we're protecting our county's history, restoring community justice and empowering generations to come. I thank you for your time and for your continued service to the people and constituents of Notaway County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Ford? Ms. Ford? Welcome, Ms. Ford.
Thank you. First, giving the honor to God, the one who is in control.
Amen.
To all elected officials and the citizens of Notaway County, good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Elvira Ford, I'm a lifetime resident of Notaway County. I stand before you this evening to remind you of the old singing, "It is better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it." So it is with Ingleside Seminary, Ingleside Elementary, Brookville Elementary. Should it be sold? Absolutely not. You may feel that you don't need it today, but with the new challenges in our county, think if we can't maintain what has been given to us through 133 years of hard work, how in the world will we afford a new building at today's cost? It is my hope that as you are our representatives, you will make plans to save as many buildings and educational facilities that belong to Notaway County in the future. As a friend of mine often commented, land is the only thing God ain't making no more of. Many individuals during campaigns and meetings I've attended have accused this one or that one of wasting money or having available funds and had all the answers, but the story has changed. Remember, Brookville is part of Notaway County and we are your constituents. Brookville is a place that has taken everybody nobody wanted, from those with tuberculosis to the mentally ill, to the geriatric patients, to the incarcerated, to sex offenders, to those infested with drugs. And we've educated thousands of citizens, but we have survived and showed what can be done if we look and develop innovative ideas and programs for our communities and all citizens. Consider this. Have you sent notifications to the citizens of Brookville about this plan? I sure have received a multitude of certified mailings about industrial solar. Have you done your homework or have you just listened to others? Has it already been decided that the land in question will be sold? And who is in the running? How many of you know the history, well you do now, of this great land and buildings thanks to Dr. August? Would you dare sell a building on the Civil Rights Education Heritage Trail with no understanding of what happened in this historic area? Have you walked the halls looking at the future potential of these buildings or considered an action plan to use this facility to its highest? The rooms look great for many things, including offices, a cafeteria, auditorium space, much parking is available for. Do you realize that we are a food desert area and a food bank there serves hundreds of citizens in Nottaway? Have you visited the program, asked about it, or we're looking for volunteers? I get at least four calls a week on my personal phone for citizens in Nottaway looking for somebody to help them with their food. Have you attended or participated in any of the exercise programs? Beautiful, in that beautiful gym that so many years ago was established there. Are you aware of the number of homeless in our area? Have you thought about the recreational and educational needs of our entire county? Everyone is not into sports, and if you research, you will find the majority of our citizens will not have a career in sports. Have you considered a real solution for all citizens? Let's think outside of the box. Systematic improvements have proven to be unsuccessful. Is this the only way or the easiest way to get what is wanted? What happens after the money and buildings are gone? Will we take tax dollars and rent more buildings? The love of money is the root of all evil, and we will. You have to trust me that sorrows will come if these buildings are sold. This is a time to reflect on the past and use earlier lessons to imagine and work for a better future. We ask that you act justly, have love and mercy, and walk humbly for our constituents. We're counting on you to do the right thing. Deal or no deal? No deal, don't say it.
Thank you, Ms. Ford.
Thank you.
I've been letting everybody go a little bit over, so just make sure we're close as five minutes as we can.
Good evening. I am not a lifelong resident of Nottaway County. My wife and I moved here in 2020, and since coming here, we decided that we want to volunteer with the Hope Food Pantry, which currently operates out of the Burkeville Elementary School. My wife and I have been a part of this pantry effort for several years, and I'm here tonight to ask respectfully that you allow us to continue to use the Burkeville Elementary building to serve my community and your community. As you know, the Burkeville Elementary School has been closed for eight years, but in that time, it's become something for more than just an empty structure, it's become a place of hope for a lot of people, a lot of your constituents. Every month, over 400 people, families, seniors, veterans, and children come through our doors to receive food and encouragement. For many of them, it's the only consistent help that they can actually rely on. When my wife and I first began volunteering, our plan was simple, we are both retired, so we thought we'd work one day a week, maybe a couple of hours a day at a time. But as we got more and more involved with Jackie and Hal and the crew there, the couple of hours we thought we were going to do turned into three days a week, five hours a day, because the need is just that great. And truthfully, we wouldn't have it any other way. The people who come to us are our neighbors, and they need us. The school's layout is perfect for what we do. If we were granted permission to use the kitchen that's located in the building, this would give us an opportunity to eventually serve hot meals to people who are in need, especially during the cold months. The classrooms and hallways that we currently use give us space to store and organize food safely and efficiently. Everything about that particular location allows us to serve with dignity and compassion, something that would be difficult, if not impossible, to recreate anywhere else. With today's economy, more and more families in Nottaway County are struggling. Groceries and gas and utilities all cost more while incomes stay the same. We've seen a steady rise in the number of people coming for help. Just this past week, three people, three new people came through the line, people who never imagined that they would ever need a food pantry. When someone walks through our doors, they're not just looking for a bag of food, they're looking for hope, they're looking for a community, they're looking for somebody who cares. By allowing the Hope Food Pantry to continue to operate at Burkeville Elementary, you're not just keeping the lights on in an old building, you're helping to keep hope alive for hundreds of people right here in Nottaway County. You're saying that this county has values, that this county has compassion, that this county cares about its community, and this county cares about dignity for every person. If I may ask, a question that was just previously asked, have any of the board members ever been to the Hope Food Pantry to see what goes on there? I would imagine you would want to know what the citizens of this county needs from you. I would like to personally invite each of you to come and see for yourselves the work being done there. Talk to the people we serve, the volunteers who give their time, and see the difference this building makes in so many ways. I truly believe that once you see it, you'll understand why it's so important that we remain where we are. We've searched in Burkeville, we've searched in Crew, we've searched in Blackstone, and this is our best option. On behalf of all the volunteers and the families we serve, I respectfully ask that you allow the Hope Food Pantry to remain in the Burkeville Elementary School so we can continue to serve and strengthen our community together. Thank you for your time and thank you for your continued commitment to the people of Nottaway County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hewitt. Wanda Dyson.
Good evening.
Good evening. Chair Collins, Board, citizens. Everybody has pretty much said everything that's in my speech. However, it's near and dear to us. I'd like to thank you for allowing me to use this platform in support of saving our historical Blackstone, excuse me, Burkeville Elementary School for the purpose of community In doing things with decency and in order, I'll keep this as short and sweet as possible. This is entitled, "A Change Has Got to Come." I attended Burkeville Elementary School under the name of Ingleside, and my Uncle James Dyson Senior started his teaching career there as well. I petition to save Burkeville Elementary School for several reasons. One, it serves as an historical landmark for our community, and removal of our history is not an option, not an option. Number two, the school would serve as a community center with endless options for the betterment of our community physically, mentally, and financially by bringing in businesses, organizations to provide training jobs, revenue to our community. Number three, it currently serves, as Ms. Hewitt says, as a home for Hope Pantry. Be more, I volunteered there as well. It is imperative that we continue to house Hope Pantry, because as Dr. August shared with you, Nottaway faces some of the highest food insecurity rates in Virginia, estimating 13% of our residents struggle to afford meals, and 2/3 of them live in areas that are still without a grocery store. When I moved out of Nottaway County many years ago, I left and there was one grocery store. I moved back, and there's still one grocery store. Totally unacceptable. In a world of chaos and confusion, we are facing a lot of challenges, people. Changes in SNAP are here, they are here, and they are dictating a change in our community that we are not prepared for. Our children cannot be educated on an empty stomach. As a clinical social worker, I've seen the faces of hungry children, children who acquire adverse outcomes such as developmental delays, behavioral problems, and physical and mental health issues due to food insecurity. And these children, guess what? They've become adults with issues and concerns that should have been addressed when they were children. A change has got to come. I remember working for the county many, many years ago, telling a client, "I'm sorry, we don't have a shelter here in Nottaway County." So thank you, John Rock, for your efforts in trying to get resources into our community, just simply trying to make a change. Exactly where is that shelter? My point exactly, where is it? We need resources in this community. Ladies and gentlemen, a positive change has got to come. We cannot expect the same outcome. We cannot expect it, the same behavior. We cannot expect it. We're doing the same thing and expecting something different. A change has got to come. We will continue to fight, but it has to be collectively, collectively. In closing, as a registered voter and taxpayer and citizen of Nottaway County, I challenge you to keep Burkeville Elementary School open, to serve as a community center, to enhance, I repeat, to enhance the resources that we already have in Nottaway County, and bring additional jobs and revenue to the citizens of our community. At some point in time, we have to ask ourselves, the school board tells us they're broke. Why? Why are they broke? Has anyone looked into that? Why are they broke? And if someone else said, "Blackstone Primary School, are they up for sale as well?" Those are some of the questions we have to ask ourselves. Again, a positive change has got to come in order for our community to survive the changes in this country. Thank you for the opportunity to share this information, my concerns, and my issues with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyson. Thank you. All right, we have three to go. We have Ms. Connie Reynolds Hurt. Hello, Ms. Hurt, thank you for coming this evening.
TJ said, "Take him off."
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you all for letting me, giving me the opportunity to say what I would like to say about this issue. I think all my previous speakers on the issue of selling Burkeville Elementary School have really captured the historical significance of the school and its location to our community, and I think they've done a wonderful job with that. I also like to bring out another issue. And my issue is with emergency preparedness, event recovery, and continuing and the continuity of operations. A disaster recovery is an initial response to an incident, and should be a well-thought-out approach to sustaining and returning to operations critical processes to normal operations in the event of emergency. Virginia Tech identifies three most important planning considerations for emergency planning purposes to consider. Consider, one, the loss of your facility, significant decrease in staffing, and the loss of equipment and records necessary to maintain business operations. So I am really addressing the issue of moving the registrar's office to Blackstone, okay? Because co-locating critical government operations increases, greatly increases, the risk level of you not being able to return to normal operations in the event of a disaster. And a disaster can be anything, it could be a fire, it could be a flood, we've seen it all happening all around us, we are not immune. Moving the registrar's office to Blackstone into the same building as all the other critical government operations increases the risk of loss to the county of the critical data and being able to accurately and return to operations. Now, we know that our President Donald Trump, one of his main initiatives is accurate and verified voter records. So to co-locate this office with other government offices, you have already increased your risk of not being able to return to operations should you get, should encounter an emergency. In addition, the registrar's office in Burkeville, I might be wrong, but I think it might be the only polling place in Burkeville for our citizens. Moving to Blackstone is making us drive another 20 miles one way. We have an aging population that we've all recognized. I am one of them, and I don't want to drive extra 25 miles just to vote. So what is the reason for co-locating all of this in Blackstone? It's not serving all of our constituencies, and quite frankly, it reeks of voter suppression because you're making it much harder for us to cast our vote. In addition, I thought the move to Burke Blackstone for the county offices was a temporary move, okay, until you all finished renovating the facilities at Nottaway. So why are we going to pay to move the registrar's office and all the voting records and equipment to Blackstone temporarily, and then where we going to put it? We don't, you know, Blackstone is a wonderful, growing little town, and I hope it continues, but you have other constituents that do not live in Blackstone, and we do not want to have to drive three and four times as far to cast a vote. So I appreciate you entertaining me today, but I hope that you will consider that, that it's no need to move temporarily and then have to move again. You've already said we don't have any money. So we would like to see Burkeville continue to be serviced for the citizens that we have there to handle our voting requirements and needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hurt. Sarah Allen.
Thank you all for having me today. I'm so nervous, this is my first time speaking in front of a board. My neighbor, Ms. Norton, my teacher, Mr. Ingram, Mr. Rock, my plumber, I don't have too much interaction with y'all. I'm coming to speak because I don't want y'all to allow the school board to sell the Burkeville Elementary School. And in my eighth, well, I've been voting, I haven't missed an election since I was 18, and never have I ever voted for the school board to run the county. I voted for the board of supervisors, I voted for who I wanted to make the decisions, and y'all are sitting up here. And I, just so you know, I don't have anything written, because like a lot of these citizens, I work, I work all day, sometimes I work two jobs, and you know, I would never complain about them taxes, because the reason I have to work so hard is because this county doesn't have anything. And I know those taxes, at least I'm hoping, that them taxes will be invested back into the county to do things for our citizens, because we need those things. And y'all woke up one morning and y'all decided that y'all was going to run for office, y'all was going to take on the problems of the previous board, and y'all was going to get all the complaints for the debt and everything, and I applaud that, but that alone, money alone is not going to get us out of the situation, it's going to come from citizen help. And it's not going to help us if we remove the place where the citizens help one another, like our neighbors, like our teachers, like our community plumbers. We all have to work together to do this, and one of the issues, and I'm going to jump around, because I really just gonna, I didn't prepare, I wanted to go home and go sleep, but Chris Page told me it was a party at the I wanted to go home and go sleep, but Chris Page told me it was a party at the board of supervisors. And y'all know we ride together.
He didn't bring anything.
So, one of my issues is, is that a lot of people are talking about the school board and what they plan to do with the money to build infrastructure and everything. But, you know, according to Georgetown, Nottaway has a 39.7, 40% Medicaid rate in children alone, which means most of them are on SNAP. Most of them don't have the food necessary to do that. Most of them, if not all of them, are in Nottaway County Public School Systems. You know, a couple of them homeschool, which is fine, you know, I love it. But we have to do better as a community to not depend totally on the government to solve all our problems. We have to work together as a community to help each other, and we need that building for that. And, you know, it's only going to get worse. And this kind man back there, he was talking to me while this was going on, he said, "Failure to plan is a plan to fail." And that's what we're doing by if we sell this building that's already ours. Like, we failed to plan at first. That's why over five years, we're going to pay Blackstone BB&amp;T $300,000. When, if y'all had have known that the school board was going to sell this building, y'all could have put that $300,000 in that building right there. But y'all didn't have all the information because sometimes people are just not truthful. And I'm going to tell you the truth right now. Y'all are going to see a whole bunch of me. I'm going to rally everybody. I'm going to rally people to support y'all because y'all need help. I know what it's like to be on the other end, the people yelling at you. I know what it's like to be with people that don't like you so they try to ruin your livelihood because you and the officer, they won't volunteer to do it. These are free services.
Please address the board.
Oh, okay. My bad. So, with that being said, and I'm watching my time because I've been ready to go home. If you could do anything with that board, and I've said this a million times, Nottaway County needs mental health services. They need mental health services, and we are under a crossroads community services board. They have a satellite office in every county except for Nottaway County, but yet we pay money every single year. Now, I asked a previous board member, and they said they just could not find a place in this area. And I'm thinking that would be a perfect place. I'm a licensed professional counselor. I run a very discreet private practice, but I don't have the resources to do what a community services board do. They, this county needs wraparound services. And just to use my last 30 seconds, I do strictly DUIs. Do you know how busy I am in Nottaway County?
Oh, yeah.
Okay? So, we need to use that building. I would love to use that building for that. Thank you.
I'm glad you indeed, no matter. Hey, Ms. Allen, if you don't want to ride with him home, if you rode with him, I don't know you, but I'd be glad to take you home. I would ride with him.
Mr. Page.
No.
This will be our final speaker, and then we do have a letter that came in on email.
We know each other well. We served on the board together in that school in Burkeville. That's right?
Yes.
So, John, I like your idea of, you know, tabling this thing, and I like your motion, but I'm going to ask you to do something better. Let's deny it. Let's just deny it right here tonight. And if the school board really wants to get rid of the property, they don't want the bill to maintain it, they'll just surplus it to you, and then you can decide whether to keep that building open. You could decide. You could do what you need to do with the building. Furthermore, the narrative that the building is crumbling, vacant, vacant liability is simply not accurate. It's just not. The property is a functioning hub for our community right now. Could some repairs be done? Of course. But it currently houses the registrar's office in a critical, which is a critical part of our democratic process. It's also home to Feedmore, which is a vital community resource that helps put food on the table for our most vulnerable families. The school features a nearly brand-new gym and serves as an official emergency shelter, which is crucial lifeline when a disaster strikes, and we found that out during the ice storm. The existence of these active functional community services proves that the building is a valuable asset, not a failed one. To make an informed, responsible decision, the county must conduct its own independent evaluation of that property. One evaluation where the county has control over the scope of the evaluation. For instance, a school may ask, independent auditor say, "What's it going to take to make it a school again?" It's going to cost you a lot of money. But the county may say, "What's it going to take just to fix that leak over the registrar's office and put in some new urinals in the bathroom?" And we're only looking at $83,000, which may be better. Therefore, the school's, school board's feasibility study may not reflect the current reality, particularly when key community assets are actively and successfully using portions of the building right now. By commissioning a third-party opinion, the county can gain a clear, unbiased assessment of the property, its true value and condition, and ensuring that any future decisions are based on accurate information and with public input. We, the citizens, see this not as a burden but as an opportunity. The closure of Burkeville Elementary was touted as a cost-saving measure, yet it's led to neglect and now an attempt to liquidate a public asset and bypass public consent. It's just your consent. We voted you to give it. The county should not allow the school board to control the sale and keep the proceeds from this failed endeavor. Instead, we insist that the proper procedure be followed, require, require the school board to surplus this property to the county, and the county decide what to do with it and what to do with the funds. We elected you to do that. If you decide to sell it down the road after public input, okay, that's on you. If you decide to give proceeds to the school, it's on you if you decide to put it to the courthouse. That's what we elected you to do. We elected our school board to educate our children, and that's what they need to focus This is the appropriate path forward. Surplusing the property to the county would allow for a transparent and publicly accountable process. The board of supervisors representing all county citizens could then decide the best use of this asset. And then I just want to close on another issue. When I came to Nottaway County, the school's budget was about $26 million, and that's been about eight years ago. A few years ago, it was $28 million. That's about three, four years ago. You are at $40 million now. Forty million. And the regional, the regional reports came out about how our children are tested in school. We were second to last. Second to last. Forty million dollars. Wow. Then when he's at 60, I mean, we're spending a good amount of money per kid. And attendance is going down. It's affecting your economic development, which means you got to raise taxes. And the school wants more. They want to take the property that you have invested interest in, sell it, and then use it for projects that have no supervision, no oversight. Let's do the right thing, the responsible thing. Tell them no right here today, make them surplus it to you, and then we could talk about what to do with the building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Page.
I believe. I don't know if we can make a little question.
Then we had, we had two emails. Colonel Greg Eames, his subject is no to the Burkeville School sale based on historical grounds, the practical uses of the building, using it as a food pantry. So, he supports no sale. Then we had a letter from Miss Kimberly Dyke-Harsley. She talks about everyone has to eat in rural areas, have limited access to healthcare facilities, so it's crucial to have fresh fruits, vegetables, and other food options available through Total Life Southside Hope Pantry. So, she also advocates for no sale of the property. Those are the two pieces of communication we had. That is everybody on the list. Did I miss anyone?
There's a petition circling online that has 52 votes already, and I have 63 emails and two other petitions circling.
And this is for no sale of the property?
No sale. I have to come here with you.
All right.
We're going to close the public.
I'm ready to, I have not missed anyone. Everybody that signed up has spoken.
Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
I second.
All the family?
Mr. Chairman, I have pointed clarification for the public hearing.
Okay.
And many of you do know this, some of you do not. The school board holds the deed to the Burkeville School. However, the county paid the cost years ago when the school was built. Hence, the school board owns the right to sell the property, but the county has the right to direct the funds. Thank the mayor of Burkeville for coming forward tonight because I was not aware, I knew about the historical value in the building in the backwood. I was not aware of the Burkeville connection, the sewer, and the well. I also want to remind you that the school board evicted the county as of January 15th. So, I'm glad Mr. Abbott, the school board chair, is here tonight to hear all of this conversation. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, the public has spoke on the matter of which they wish to decide to do with the building up there, and that's to request the school board to surplus it to the county. And the county, with all means, to try to hold rather than build new square footage, to hold that still available and accountable to those who need it. I have gotten several, I had no calls on the EMS levy prior to us supporting it, but I've had several calls on that food bank and the importance of it. One lady said, "One whole week out to a month, she has relied on that place to feed her and her children." If that's not heart-touching, nothing is. I requested the school board surplus it. They can't do it. They've heard the public speak, it's the public's building. I'm not easily moved, but I've been moved by this. And I've been more so moved with somebody, Ken, the James Dyson, his niece, come up here and speak to us. He and I were, we were tight. Ingram and I always be tight, but me and James Dyson was down tight.
I've seen several of my former students speak tonight.
I, I've requested the school board surplus it to the county. And if we need to put that in the motion, I'll do it. Otherwise, I'm...
We're going to have a quick code discussion.
Okay.
Catherine, it's my understanding that the school has the ability to sell the property with the county's permission.
That's correct.
The school has the ability to surplus the county, to the county.
That's correct.
And then the county disposes or fixes or does whatever we want to do with that property, becomes ownership of the county.
That's correct.
That is the code of Virginia.
Yes, you have to approve the sale before it is...
And what, in the event that, that we did not approve the, approve the sale, what would happen?
I think that would just go back to further discussions between the county and the school board at that point.
But just for clarification, too, at no point does the county dictate how the school spends their money under any sale or otherwise. Is that correct?
You mean, like, if, if the school, you gave, you guys gave permission for the school board to sell it?
Right.
The county doesn't have the authority to dictate what those funds would be used for. It's just you have to give that initial permission for sale.
Right, and that's, that's what I was trying to understand. I, I thought you said something about that we dictate how they spend it. Okay.
That's only if they surplus it to us, I think, is what it was...
But yeah, at no time can we give them money and tell them how to spend it. They can tell us what they want to do with it, but then they can change their mind once they get it. That's up to them.
That's my understanding. Mr. Chairman, I would like to speak. I've had a conversation with Chairman Sonny Abbott, and I just wanted to say that the school board, and this is just conversations in, in my office, the school board realizes what was situation, we're dealing with the courthouse. And you, we realize, because we took tours, of the security front entrances of a lot of these schools, and, and that's some of their capital improvements. So, their, their intent is to try to make those improvements and not cause another hardship with us. I just want to say that. Okay? But anyway, I'm, I'm not saying anything, but, 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 I mean, that's, now, you're right, they can change their mind. I understand that. But that is their intent.
Right.
And... I, I agree with the school board on getting rid of, they don't need it. It's a liability to them to keep it up. But I don't agree with it just being sold to, to be sold.
Well, you got some questions that the citizens have been asking, like, number one, if it's surplus and if it's sold, will the school board's request drop by $80,000? That's a fair question the citizens have asked, okay? So, the other thing is, hearing the citizens talk tonight...
Where, where's the figure, Chairman, of 80,000? I saw the maintenance of 80,000, but...
That's the, that's utilities. 10,000 is paid by the registrar, so, or us.
Of the 80,000, but they would surely get more than 80,000 for the building if they are able to sell it.
Right, I'm just saying...
And they would get all of those proceeds, correct?
That's what they're asking for.
Right.
Right, what I'm saying is, if, if this is no longer a burden to them, well, a cost to them, will their budget drop?
Oh, now, I see, clarification.
Okay, so, hearing the citizens tonight, regardless of what happened to that building, whether it's surplus and the county keeps it, it's sold, the school takes the money, if it stays on the county's side, one thing the county would have to figure out is supplemental cost, and we all agreed to that. That, that's something that we would have to do, is figure out how to supplement the cost. And then to what y'all already recognized, we need money. We need money, we need money, we need money. Oh, my God, do we need money? I'm sick of hearing about money. You know, I mean, it makes the world go around. God didn't need money. What the hell do we need money for here on this manly planet, this rock that, as was Alec only said, "They're making no more of." But for God's sake, can we stop money? Government stay the hell out of our pockets, okay? Please. But anyway, so, is 80,000 too much for the county to absorb to keep that building open?
Well, I had, I had a discussion with Ms. Green. We spoke after the school board meeting. And so, what you're dealing with are 501(c)(3).
Right.
These are nonprofit groups and a food bank, for instance. There are grant funds available.
Mm-hmm.
She's aware of those. She did say, "This is, I'm bringing forward these things, but we need to find more people to help." So, the county does not have the ability to take on great expense at this point.
Right.
We've got the courthouse coming.
Right.
The county could support a community center in some way, whether that's Mr. Reynolds' rent at the, at the building, that's some income. Ideally, for a community center, it needs to be a nonprofit 501(c)(3) entity that owns the building.
And you're talking about someone stepping up...
If we support, and if we support...
Right.
I was going to ask...
Then we could support, we'd have to, we'd have to talk to crew, we'd have to talk to blacks, we'd have to hear everybody's say.
I was going to ask the town of Burkeville. Would y'all be willing to help us with this?
We don't have the money to help you.
I understand, but I want to talk about in, in the transition...
Don't matter, it's a candidate.
In the transition.
I got one question for, for you and the school board. What is, what is the, the big fire to, to, to sell the building?
They're, so, the school board's been very clear that they're in pursuit of educating children. And for eight years, they've had this extra expense of the utilities of this building. Mr. Reynolds' office was a temporary, I saw that, that it was a temporary, and that's been a number of years. They were, I believe they were unaware that Feedmore had grown so large, because we did our tour up there, and that's where we met Feedmore. They, they were open that day. And so, they've had mission creep. There's not a, there is not a Nottaway child going to school in that building.
I understand.
And so, that's fair, and that's fair. That's true.
Again, and again, I go back to what I said. What is the big, the big hurry to sell the building? We could take, we, it's money coming out, out of our pocket, regardless of coming from the school board or coming from the, from the school.
Correct.
It's coming out of our pockets. We need it, you've heard the people speak, we need it in this, in this town. We don't need to sell it off to somebody just so we can pocket money and, and beautify our, beautify the, the schools. There's no money in the schools. The kids, the enrollments are falling. As Billy Colburn said, "Our death rates are outpacing our, our, our birth rate."
Yeah.
So, what are, what are we fighting the prettier for school for, that we don't have the right to, to attend? Next week, we'd be closing another school, or next year, closing another school. We going to sell that too?
We're going, we're going, this is, this is board discussion time, and we had a question for the mayor. We're not going to raise hands out.
Okay?
We've already had a long discussion.
All right.
So, board discussion, we've had it. Is there anything else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. So, part of this, too, is speaking about saving buildings. I don't want to build a new courthouse. I've made that very clear all along. I've said, "Fight the power." I've said it the whole time, and I still stand with that. I say, "Knock a damn wall at that building over there and do what you need to do with it. Add space to it. It don't fit in the footprint." You know what? When my dog got bigger, I bought him a bigger dog house. You know why? I thought that was a small thing to do, but I could have cut a hole in the back of it and built an extension on it. You know what? Let's be honest. But now, we heard V. Melvako come in and talking about what this is going to cost us. We've already set the precedent, potentially, that we going to build a new courthouse when we got one standing that we still got to do something with. Wasting money, moving people around, wasting money.
We can't knock a hole in it. National Historical Society said we can't-
Okay, we've had, we've had discussion, so, are we taking any action?
Yeah, I'd like to put a motion on the floor-
I'm not gonna lead anybody, okay?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor to deny the request for the school board to sell the, the Burkeville Primary School located at 50th, 507 Middle Street in Burkeville, Virginia. Angle side, excuse me. He's been low.
We've got a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, you wanna, you wanna roll call?
Yep.
Mr. Norton. All right, Mr. Ingram, you second it?
Ah.
Missing, uh, Ms. Norton?
Ah.
Collins is aye. Five oh, denied the sale. Where the dress at?
That's what we're talking about right there.
We're just getting ready to the meeting, you guys wanna take a break?
Yes, please.
Okay.
I need a motion for a short recess.
A 15-minute recess.
Make a motion for a 15-minute recess, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Ah.
Watch your mics, watch your mics.
Think about, think about sermon again.
Yes, sir.
I would like to, I would like to recognize Mr. French's predecessors over in the corner, down at Bryant, Bryant laughing because she's retired, it looks like.
I can be nervous, I might, I might say something wrong.
I need to poll the board, is everybody ready to go past 10 o'clock?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
My wife's not, but I guess I am.
All right, Mr. French, start your report.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, good afternoon, I just got a quick, a few short items to go through this in the evening. The sub 23 and 460 R cut is just about complete, got a few minor punchless items we are working on out there. I will say that we have received some complaints regarding some signage and compliance with the intersection, we have our traffic engineers out there actually performing a field review this week, sitting out there watching traffic flow through there.
Excuse me, Mr. French. Chair, can you step away from the door, please?
Can you turn his sound up a little bit?
Let me.
Yes.
Oh, he just gotta-
I just did, right next to the mic.
Become an entertainer, get on the microphone, yeah.
All right, so, traffic engineers are performing their field review at the new R cut this week, they're watching all that traffic flow out there, judging how ju, how drivers are using that intersection, they may, may not make some recommendations for signage and pavement markings based on what they see. Going forth from there, we'll work with law enforcement, get the compliance and enforcement we need out there as well. The Darville, Picket Roundabout is nearing advertisement, before our next meeting, that project will be out on the street for advert, for construction bids, hope to have good bids for this project. We'll select a contractor probably around the new year, and we will have a spring construction start date on the Roundabout project. We wrapped up the Crystal Lake Road, rural rustic, last month, that project, once complete, went to traffic engineering for their review, there's not a speed limit posted on that route right now. Part of the rural rustic program and statute is that we post that route at 35 miles an hour unless otherwise warranted. That short dead end road, we're gonna leave it at 35 miles an hour, so there will be a new speed limit sign put up on that route, once that's enforced, we'll parlay that over to law enforcement for enforcement. On the maintenance side of the house, we are preparing for a final round of mowing and litter pickup, we are scheduled to have this begin on the 5th of November, right after Election Day, so we don't have any interference with that traffic, and our goal to get that wrapped up by the Thanksgiving holiday. This will be a full width right-of-way mow on our divided highways, so we'll take care of our, all of our high banks and our medians as well. Additionally, we are prepping for snow, in maintenance world, we have a dry runs this coming week, break out all of our plows and spreaders, get everything all cleaned, cleaned and greased up and ready for whatever mother nature's gonna give us this winter. That is all I have, any questions?
All right, thank you, Mr. French.
You're planning on resurfacing 49 South?
49 South, I will have to check the schedule for the, for next year, we are done with resurfacing for this year.
Right, because it's terrible.
Yes, sir.
With all those potholes.
460 West, just past the 606 overpass, has been a heck of a bump and tried, attempted to be fixed several times. Anybody who travels up there often knows to get in the left lane before you get to the bridge to miss the bump, it will knock you out the road. They tried shaving it off or something, and it's still there, it's bad.
Okay, we will take a look at that.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, bud.
Mr. French, my short report, I like-
I liked the short one.
Anything on solid waste, Mr. Bowen?
Yes, sir, we're still planning to do a work session in December.
And that's still our, we're gonna have our contractor there, or our consultant?
Yes, sir, TRC, yes, sir.
Further, further discussions on our landfill, okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. You have number three, building inspections.
Yeah, buildings, yeah.
Did you give us an update, did you have your interviews?
Yeah, we interviewed October 2nd and, and made a, an offer, and the county that he come from countered our offer, and it was way out of Notaway's league, so we didn't get that person. We do have a person that actually lives in Notaway, is, is another choice, and I'm working on trying to make an offer, but I need to work on getting him some training, and, but I think it'd be a good fit for Notaway, and I think y'all would like to see somebody from Notaway County, anyway.
I sure would.
So, so I'm working on that, so, anyway.
Okay. Animal control, shield is not here.
Hold on, Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yes.
Mr. Bowen?
Yes.
Mr. Rocker, myself, on personnel, we were not aware of interviews.
Okay, I didn't know y'all wanted to go that deep in the management of that, I, I got a, I, I got a Prince Edward Amelia County Inspector Jerry, who's got a lot of experience in, in interviewing as well as an inspector, so I didn't know y'all wanted to be part of that. I mean, where do you want to start, you gonna do landfill too, or just, I mean, I'll ask you. I mean, where do you want to stop, you want to do landfill too or just, I mean, I ask you, anyway. But I'm not going to make any offer that doesn't meet our budget.
Okay.
Okay, but, anyway.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know how this works, if we don't like it, we fire you.
Right. I mean, that's a question, so the personnel is when there's a problem and he wants your advice.
Yeah.
But y'all want to be on interviews, I didn't realize.
Well, I didn't know how deep you wanted the personnel committee to go.
I mean, I'd be glad to invite you, but I figured I'd really bother another inspector in because I felt that was the appropriate.
Well, he's a subject matter expert and that makes sense.
Yeah, you can have that discussion.
Okay, but I'll keep that in mind next time, I appreciate it. Well, and it still might be a next time because this person might not.
Don't say that.
I know.
So we have animal control, we've got the new shelter underway, they have been working more, I saw some pictures from the chair group.
Great, yeah.
Anything from Piedmont Health District?
No, sir.
Anything from the library, Mr. Jack?
I would, I would like to comment our condolences to Jackie as she lost her husband this week.
Everybody should keep her in prayers, that's difficult. Number seven, Notaway County School Board, would you have Ms. Martin?
Yeah, Dr.
Sunny Avenue's chair also, we have both of them.
Yeah, Dr. Martin's here, Dr. Martin and I didn't get, there's a point where you have to carry over money and it's two carryovers then you're, it's added to. And I'll let her speak on this, but, so we're looking at tonight really for the $407,000 and that's to pay bills that's probably already obligated for purchase requests, I'll let her speak on that. I do notice on the other one is direct aid unencumbered and then others encumbered. And so, we were looking at maybe you were proving that in November, but you might want to have questions and ask her, Heather, you know, this next month, so they would be complete transparency. So that was the thought of it, but, anyway, I'll let Dr. Martin speak on that, but, anyway.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board and Mr. Bowen, so I'm just going to start with a couple of highlights of what we're doing in the school division right now. We're always busy, October is the busy month, it's probably the longest month for us, there are no breaks for students really in October, so it's a long haul for our staff. But I have to say, we have amazing individuals that work in the school system. We're lucky to have their dedication to our children each and every day, they show up every day and they give 110% with what they're doing. And when I say everyone, I mean from our custodians to our teachers, from our instructional assistants, maintenance, cafeteria, bus drivers and support staff as well as our admin. We work very closely with our board to share communications and having their support with them, but I cannot say enough about the staff that we have working in the county. Our central office staff is going around and providing duty free lunch right now for our teachers at each of our schools. Just to remind us what it's like to be in a school building, I worked the cafeteria line this week and served food. I, Heather and then we're cleaning tables and emptying trash so that we could give our staff a little bit of a break because you've heard us say before, our salaries are not where we want our salaries to be. We are the next to the lowest in our region right now, so anything that we can do to show that our, show our staff that we support them. I can't drive a bus, so I can't help the bus drivers out, I can ride with them, but I cannot drive a bus, so, though they say they will train me, I'm just not sure if I should do that or not. But with that too, October, October is bullying prevention month and so this has been a real big focus for the school division, not just this month, but all year. We initiated a kindness program in each of our schools, they have to do something every month to focus on that within the schools, but for this month, we're really focusing on bullying prevention. We had a presenter come in from PTC this past week for our families that talked about what cyberbullying is versus bullying because sometimes there's a perception that things are bullying and they're not always bullying. So getting people to understand what's bullying, what's mean and what's rude, which are still major concerns that we have as well. But those are a couple of the things that we have going on and, of course, for us, and you talked a lot about money tonight, we've started our budget process already. We're starting a little bit earlier, but we're really trying to make sure that we examine our budget, we look at where our funds are, what do we need and where we can move things to to maximize funding within the school division. So we're kind of already starting going through a fine tooth comb with our priorities that we're talking with the schools and then we'll be talking with the board about. And our main goal within our budget is staff salaries, that's the first and foremost, followed by capital improvement and then student mental health wellness needs, which is counseling and those type of supports. So those are kind of our focus areas as we're moving through this. As far as the budget, you have two items there, the budget adjustment, and I'll let Heather correct anything that I'm going to say that's not right, but we work very closely together on the budget and we both know the finance situation and we're checking it all the time. But the first one that you have for the $407,172, that is additional state funding, there is no locality impact to that for us. This is from the budget that was passed and marched by the school board and it was based on that biennial budget that was signed into law in June of '24. The governor signed the budget bill affecting the fiscal year '26 in May, which provided additional state funding for the school division. So again, there's no impact to the locality on this, this is solely state funding to the school division. And this funding is used for special education services, it was increased there, was an increase in summer school funding, an increase in supporting our English learner students and then, of course, any staff training that we may have. So that is of no impact to the county. The second one that you see is the budget carryover and Chapter 725 gives school divisions the ability to carry over unexpended state funds, providing the school division has met the required local effort and require a local match. You have met that, so anything that we did not spend out of the state, which typically keep in mind, the end of June, we find out that there's an increase in, from the sales tax. Like, we don't get those numbers until June 30th, so we have carryover funds that come in. A lot of the funding that you're going to see us asking for, and we're asking to carry over $3,24,096.75, is under direct aid and that was unencumbered funds and about approximately 2.1 million. And then encumbered funds are things that we had already had purchase orders in the process for, that we had to pay, that carried over into the next fiscal year, which was in the amount of $839,000. And then revenue from the facility use rentals of about $3,000. And as I share with you, the encumbered funds are those purchase orders that have not been completed or billed. Our unencumbered funds, a lot of that did come from some of our salary savings, from the state too, from where we didn't meet all of our salary amounts for having open vacancies. We won't have it this year because with the exception of a position here or there, we're fully staffed in our school, so we will not have salary savings this year that we have historically seen. Also, we want to use some of these funds, we didn't make about over a million dollars in cuts to our budget last year, so these carryover funds will allow us to put some savings or some of the money back into areas that we did cut, which was our counseling services, materials and supplies for our transportation department and facility maintenance and then the technology support. And then the additional funds that we're carrying over, we've been very successful in our student internship program and so that's something that we want to continue to fund moving forward. So some of that carryover will be used to continue to fund that program. One of the biggest areas is capital improvements and you've heard us talk about the safety of our schools being a top priority. Some of that money currently right now would be used for the security vestibule at Blackstone Primary. Now, people might say, why are we doing it at Blackstone and none of the other schools? Blackstone's is only about $300 and some thousand dollars. Every other school is well over a million dollars for us to put a security vestibule somewhere. And we want to start using our funds for capital improvement projects that we have across the county. So with this carryover, we are able to put at least one security vestibule in to start with, to start moving forward in that. And then the rest of it, what we want to do, and we have talked with the county about this, is in the treasurer about, setting aside about $800,000 of that into a money market account so that we can apply it to capital improvement needs, setting it there for things that we need. Because as we've shared with you previously, we have a lot of needs, we have HVAC replacements that need to be done, every single school needs a roof right now. And, of course, this money is not going to even touch the needs that we have, we've talked about the security vestibules that we need, we need to replace pavement at the complex. So there's a lot of needs there and we would like to have a capital improvement fund, so when things come up, we are able to fix them. As I've shared with you before about Crew, we just had another leak last week, we were in training, we had water pouring into the building again, we had to get training to help us get it fixed. And it's a lot of taking old and new and trying to put things together and we really are going to have to proceed forward with some type of HVAC repair on Crew Primary School. So you have the budget carryover, which is separate from the budget adjustment. The budget adjustment is just the additional state funding that we are allowed. The carryover is the money that state funds, not locality funds, that we are entitled to carry over into the next fiscal year because we did make and y'all did make your local, local match. So those were the two items that we had for you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for a couple of questions for clarification real quick, because I know we're going to be asked, first of all, the, can the school funds collect interest like a money market? Because we've been told that the, in years past, that the schools cannot have funds that collect interest, it's.
We can collect interest, but we have to report it every year on our annual school report.
Okay, because the, just to be clear, the old adage was that we need to hold it, so it collects interest because y'all can't do that, so that is a falsity.
As long as we are stating it on our annual school report that's filed every year with the state and that, that's every penny that we have spent or used in the school division or that we have in our possession that we report.
And to follow that up, I assume that y'all are going to shop that money market account to see if you can get the best rate, okay, all right. The other thing is the capital list, of course, because of the potential sale of the school, anything that we're looking at doing, does this, can the, can the school potentially show us a triage list of what they want? Can we get that over to us so we have an idea when people are saying, what do they want to do? I mean, you brought this to our attention months ago about the needs of some potential capital improvements. So if we understand, and plus two, that might be good for public perception too, if we can show them, this is, and, of course, that list is subject to change, if a dire need changes. But if there's something that we can show, the needs moving forward, so that also would help us with budgeting moving forward as well. And the last thing I have for you is, just to clarify, what happens to the money if we don't allow the funds to carry over?
We have to pay it back to the state.
I wanted y'all to say that, not me.
Pay it back to the state at that point.
That's right, okay.
But to answer your question about our list, that punch list.
Right.
To per se, so we had just kind of a general list and I would like our board to have the opportunity first to prioritize what they feel is the greatest need.
We're a couple of months from, we're a couple of months from budget, so just take your time and.
Right, and so we have some work sessions coming up and they've been given the list of all of our needs. But they have not had the chance themselves to sit down and prioritize and ask us the questions too. They know what's on the list, I mean, like, we've shared with you what's on the list.
Right.
But I would like them to have the opportunity to prioritize where they want us to focus first before I am able to give that list to you.
Absolutely, we cannot, we can ill afford to have this knowledge, everything needs maintenance, but we can ill afford to have this knowledge and continue to let anything crumble moving forward. Whether you sell a building and give y'all the money to fix it, one way or the other, the funds have to come to take care of what we got, we have to do that, we have to.
I will add to it, I would much rather clean up the water coming in the building because about a month ago, we had sewage coming in the building, backed up lines. It was not fun, luckily I was busy doing something else that day, I was at another school helping them, I said, do you need me? I would have come, but luckily we were able to get them unclogged, but that's what we're working with, is very old systems.
We understand.
Piles of things in it, so, yes, I can get you a punch list eventually, but I want them to have.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely, thank you.
All right, anybody else have anything from Ms. Martin? Thank you, thank you very much.
I think she's going to need, we're going to need a vote to change, to carry over. And I would, I would do the budget adjustment first, maybe, and then look at the carryover.
Doing 407?
407, 172.
407, 172, looking for a motion to carry over funds for Notaway County's public schools.
So moved.
Second. Hold in favor?
Ah. And then they can, now the carryover money, which is $3,024,096.75.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve that carryover that stated by Mr. Bowen.
I'll second it.
Hold in favor? Any opposed? Five up.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from social services?
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't think we have anything from Mr. Zody, I don't, I don't even see him, so it's.
Yeah.
He over here.
Nothing for, okay.
Got emergency services buddy.
Emergency services buddy Hyde's here, but he doesn't have much, I know he doesn't.
I don't, and I'm going to try to move this along for you.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, staff, citizens, good evening. Real quick on the report that you have in your packet from me, just want to highlight and want to give some kudos to the three fantastic fire departments that we have, everybody's talked about tonight. Number one is, we had a drill down in Notaway Correctional Center, kudos to Burkeville Fire and EMS for September 29th, we went down and had a tractor entrapment. We had two, two workers under a tractor and we were able to go down there and do a drill in real time. We even used 911 and we used our new emergency medical dispatch protocol and we did an actual 911 call from one of the guards to, to here and we simulated it all, but it actually worked in real time. Kudos to Blackstone Fire Department for the open house on Sunday, thanks for having me, we had a great day down there, set up the hazmat truck for the county and we had some other displays, we had some real, some hurricane preparedness information, all kind of kid stuff that was Fire Prevention Week, thank you, Blackstone. Also, kudos to Crew Fire Department, we moved on over there later in the month and they had two, hosted two fantastic meetings, some of you were there. I just want to tell the citizens about it, Norfolk Southern had a fantastic safety meeting and a meal and we're going to start doing that on a regular basis. Norfolk Southern's safety people came out, we get to know each other, that's the big deal here, is, you know, we get to work with each other. So when we have an emergency, it just works like clockwork. The next thing is the solar, we had a solar firefighting class, Mr. Ingram had asked me about this years ago and when we started talking about it, but we were able to, thanks to Ron Basinger over here with Crew Fire Department for setting that up. He was able to do that one on one and we had a really good meeting and they told us about what we thought about solar and we're going to be sharing that with you as far as like an SOG, a standard operating guideline. What I'm really pushing to do is, we have one guideline, so all of our fire departments are on the same page of music if you had to respond to a solar facility, so that way we all do it the same. And then last but not least, we went over and plotted GIS coordinates at Notaway Correctional Center, put all those hydrants on our GIS map. We also went over last week to VCBR, I had to go through all the checks that everybody does, we took the team in, we did the plotting, we got all those hydrants on the maps. And what that's going to do, everyone, it's going to help our firefighters look on the map and see everything available to them now. And they're all three state facilities are now plotted on the map accurately with the device we had. We also drew down the $1 million and everybody might be thinking with the shutdown, that was going to be a problem. One day after the shutdown, we did the drawdown and it went through because it's automated, not personnel, it's not a human. So by doing that.
So you said the $1 million drawdown, that is the grant funds that we receive for the new radio system?
Correct, just, just for details on Mr. Chair, it would be the US DOJ, Department of Justice grant that we secured a couple of years ago. We have now reached the time that we need to draw it down, we met our deadline, which was December 31. And Ms. Rayford has confirmed that that $1 million has hit the county coffers and she did that immediately to Ms. Presley and myself and Mr. Bowen, so we're good to go. And we've already, I think, paid that back out to the radio vendor for part of that project. Now, I'll be at the Chicken Festival this weekend, everyone, helping Phil Morgan, I'm going to be in the command post helping him with some of that. So we're making sure all of our citizens are safe that attend the Chicken Festival this weekend. And last but not least, you have in your packet an action item tonight, and I do this every year, this is state pass-through funds and I'm asking for your approval tonight on the general consent letter that we do every year, and this is for the Virginia Department of Fire Program's fire pass-through money. And for all of you citizens out there listening, this is not county money, this is state money, it just, it funnels right through us and we give it right out to the fire departments. It's a total of $53,792. And right when we think state funding is really good, this same program pays Fairfax $2 million, it pays Henrico probably several hundred thousand. But all of our South Side Virginia departments get somewhere in the neighborhood of $40,000 to $50,000 and it has to be split up over the whole county. So just to give you that in perspective, everyone, the state funding is $53,000 and change and it's going to be split up into three fire departments, which amounts to $17,930. Today, that buys you about three sets of turnout gear, it used to buy you 10.
Anybody have anything for Mr. Hyde?
That's it, sir, I'd just like to have your motion and I put a suggested. I'd just like to have your motion, and I put a suggested motion at the bottom of the page, sir.
All right. Sitting right in front of G12, bottom of the page, small paragraph.
Sir, everything's there, just need your motions.
I move to approve the consent request as presented for the authorization of equal distribution of the FY26 Virginia Department of Fire Program's Aid to Locality ETL funding to each of the three volunteer fire departments in Notaway County. Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? All right, that's five up, Mr. Hyde.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we had Piedmont Regional Jail meeting yesterday. We did do the jail tour. They had taken down Mr. Toad's picture.
Did they?
Well, you hadn't been there.
Well, they got it though. I hope they don't have to put it back up.
They put mine, they put mine in Steve's.
In a different locality, in the jail.
All the, the reason we took the tour is all the improvements that we paid for are done, and they wanted to show, so the fences got the motion detector on it, it's got the key locks, it's got new locks on the exterior doors, it's got cameras, so it's a much more secure facility. There's 10 VCBR citizens there, much better than the 20 that had been there, so that's the third month in a row that we've stayed around 10. So that's good news. Mr. Bowen, Picket Park?
No report.
All right. Anything Circuit Clerk, Jane Brown?
Nobody's seen her.
Mr. Jones, Sheriff Jones?
Excellent work, sir.
Treasurer Ray for nothing. Commissioner Revenue? Ms. Watchers?
Her report's in the package.
Patch out.
Okay, we've got unfinished business. We've got ongoing project and committee reports. So the first one is the animal shelter. Work ongoing, Mr.?
Yes, sir, and Mr. Bowen and I attended the CARES meeting, and they have, they've gotten bids and gotten furniture ordered, and also, I think they looked at washers and dryers and those types of things, and a copy machine, so they, and they're paying for it. They've gotten, well, I mean, that's, that's part of their agreement, that they would furnish, help us furnish a place, so they, they're paying for it. But they've gotten the bids and already purchased, I think, and we're going through the county to miss having to pay the sales tax.
That's right. We're buying, you'll see, you'll start seeing reports where we're buying it, but we're being reimbursed.
Right.
And also, the town of Burkeville did never agree to pay for the sewer line, they agreed for the water line. So Mike Gentry and the CARES group are working with me and trying to figure out how we're gonna get a sewer line all the way down to the road down there. And we got, we got a plan, we'll probably buy the materials, and then I'll get reimbursed by CARES again. One thing I do like to clarify, because I heard it tonight, you know, Mr. Bo had mentioned, you know, trying to clarify, clarification on people speaking. The animal shelter, we are, we are policed by the state veterinarian's office, okay? The animal shelter we have now does not meet code, they are giving us a grace period. We could get fined up to $1,000 a day, and, and if we don't, if we don't meet this Virginia state code. And I just want to give you one example, the new animal shelter. New animal shelter, when you bring a dog in, that dog had parvo, distemper, you, you can't just put that, that dog beside another dog when he comes in, because you might have your dog been picked up, and you're, you're trying to get it, and then your dog gets sick, and that dog dies. So you gotta put that dog in isolation. You also gotta have 100% HVAC turnover to keep, in other words, the 100% air comes in, 100% air gotta come out. I just want to say, I mean, people don't understand, I know the old way was the old way, but that old way is not there anymore, and we do have to meet state code. So I just, it's, and it's not, we're not doing anything but minimum.
That's right.
We're not doing anything.
That was our, that was our agreement with the CARES group, that the county will meet code.
Right. This, this board took an old building and trying to make it into an animal shelter. You can say what you want to, but that's what we're doing, to meet the state code.
I wish the $200,000 figure was correct, but that was, that was a mistake on his part, but he called it later.
But, but anyway, but I want to share that with you. That's all I have on animals.
Okay, we got dispatching. It says Rourke and Toad. Do you guys have anything to?
No, buddy, it kinda summed that for us, I think.
Sheriff, have you, have you got a supervisor though? Did you pick a supervisor?
Yes, sir, we're moving along pretty good. We was able to get somebody out here, one of the people who interviewed, we lost the physician, and they accepted at this point.
Great.
And then just recently though, the last few days, that's kind of what we had.
Okay.
But everything's going well. We've been doing the consulting, that's working out well.
I, I really haven't heard any, any more.
I haven't had any direct complaint, no. Yeah, just like James, knock on wood.
Kirsten, field goal kicker, he gonna miss it.
We got broadband, it's work ongoing. I see, I saw a River Street truck, I saw it. Public, public safety radio project, we've, we're still working?
Yeah, that's still moving forward.
DEA update?
I like to, I like to refer that to Ms. Douglas, because she knows that I might say something that, while we're on a court order, that may not be the right thing to say.
No, I think it's fine.
Yeah, right.
Last week, I believe it was last week, that seems like a long time ago, the board voted to move forward with English construction and get into a contract with them. So based on the timeline that was given to us by the judge's attorney, we, me and Gary, on your behalf, submitted a plan to the attorney for the judges, and they have about a month to figure out what comments they have about that. They are waiting specifically on a space needs assessment, which we've spoken English about, we've gotten information from them, and we'll be able to provide that to, to the judge's attorney imminently. But the next kind of step is moving into getting into a contract with them, so we will be working on that.
And my understanding, they want dimensions of rooms or?
Yes, so we've also spoken to English's representative, Alex Amis. He knows what we need, so he's gonna give us those dimensions. They want dimensions of every single room, so Alex is gonna work with us on that and get that to us, I think, in the next couple of days.
Have we complied with the date?
Yes, they've received the plan, they've acknowledged receipt of it, and they're just waiting for some supplemental information.
Now we're...
That's correct, yeah.
A little deeper.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Great.
I think, I think I could have done that.
I have committee reports. I don't have anything from Crossroads Community Services, they meet next week. Does anybody else have anything to report from their committees?
I do, from PSR, I'd like to extend our condolences on behalf of our board, and from PSR, to the family of Arlene Robertson. She served on that committee with me. Arlene passed away several weeks ago, and she was quite a force of service in our community for decades. So I just want to address that, and we will have a vacancy there, but we'll do that at a later time. But I do want to extend our condolences to Arlene Robertson's family.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Now, we're gonna get into consent items, correspondence items.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Any opposed? Five up.
Can you do the, I do need the voting J1.
We missed out just J1.
I just need authority to vote for the board for the next VACO meeting.
Mr. Bowen is gonna attend VACO for us at the, at Homestead. He needs to be the voting member, so we need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve Mr. Steve Bowen as the, for voting credentials for Notaway County for VACO 2025.
Other duties assigned, baby.
I second. All in favor? Any opposed?
Make sure you take our honey do list with you.
That's because they don't want to go. All right, thank you, thank you, Mr. Yaw. I'll represent Notaway to the fullest.
Okay, we have a county administrative report.
Okay, yeah, we didn't, so, public hearing for the amplifforms that was scheduled for Monday has been canceled, I just want to say that. And that's all I'm reporting on right now. I think y'all, y'all have had enough tonight. We need to go and close session.
You just stirred that pot one stir.
He did, and everybody's out there drooling going, "What? What?"
Well, we're still, we're still working on the...
Explanation.
We're still working on the siding agreement.
No, now you stirred it again.
No, the explanation. Explanation.
Catherine, Douglas. Can you come back up?
No, we'll move on. No, no, sorry, Ms. Catherine.
I can't, I can't get her to home.
Members of the board, Vice Chairman Norton, anything?
Would like to, since I represent Crew, let you know that they had to postpone the regular council meeting, and that will be held on October the 20th. And I believe Mr. Hyde and Mr. Schneff will be there to give some safety procedures, and with the upcoming installation of the water lines, there is a need for our fire and rescue to talk to the town about the size of the piping and how it makes a difference on the flow. So these gentlemen will be there, and their meeting is typically at 6 o'clock, so it's gonna be on October the 20th.
Supervisor Ingram?
Yes, I wanted to correct Ms. Reynolds, I can't even think of her last name now, Hurt. She was talking about the fact that they would have to go to Blackstone to vote, and that's not true. The idea was that if we had to move a registrar, then we were gonna be able to, we had talked to the town of Burkeville and tried to get permission that we could vote like we used to vote at the fire department. So that's not true, that they'll have to drive to Blackstone to vote. That was, that was not, and I think she misunderstood.
I think, I caught on to that too.
Yeah.
And I did contact the mayor of Burkeville to make sure that was up, Dickie and I both, and then I called Chief Welch, and the Burkeville Fire Department treats that as a community place anyway, and they were fine with that, so.
Early vote would be an issue, but it would be for me too, driving from my end of the county all the way to Burkeville.
Certainly, well, and you know, I think the idea of them having to drive was not fully understood.
Right.
You know, and...
But district...
We're still gonna have to do something pretty quick, because I was told tonight that the building's gonna close on January the 15th, so.
Well, does Catherine, in my other world, when utilities are cut off a building, it's considered abandoned.
Are you talking about like a legal definition?
We take possession of things when utilities are cut off, because we need to secure...
As a landlord's perspective, I cannot take possession of a rental heist when a utility's a cut off. I tried that.
I think this is something that we, as a board, would probably need to do a little more research, yes, and I will do that.
Since she's already said that, please research.
It's on my agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Rourke?
Yes, sir. Couple things tonight, I mean, we always love when the people come forward, whether you want to hear it or not, you gonna hear it, and we love it when they come forward. One thing I try to disseminate is political, moral, and personal feelings, and base it on fact. You can't argue with fact. The other stuff is, muddies the water. So, so to that end, I would like to say that maybe on our next work session, there's a couple of items, the levy, also maybe for consideration, board members, I would like to get some information on the previous budgets. And the reason why I'm thinking this is, the last budget I voted for, I believe it was John N. Zavino's budget that he, he presented, or it could have been, might have been Mr. Rourke's prior to that, because I voted against the last four.
I was gonna say, I never know you to vote for one, but I won up here.
That's right, you won up here for a long time. So what I like to see, board members, and it's deeper than my thoughts, but I would like to see and compare the budgets now to the previous budgets that I had voted for, and understand, and what I don't want to hear, guys, respectfully, is I don't want to hear is, "Well, inflation, the cost went up because it grows with time." I don't want to hear that. I want to look at those line items and see, okay, this jumped by this percent, why? Actual explanations of why these budgets jump for this and that. You heard tonight, our fire departments haven't asked for nothing. Now, maybe, we did it, because I know we did it back in 2020 when they, when COVID, we gave them $270,000, because a couple of the board members was just ready to throw three cents in the ditch. We were like, "No." So we gave it to the fire departments, a one-time pay, $270,000. But what, but like I said, why did it change the percentage? Why? I want to know that. I think that's good for us, and I think that's for the citizens to see as well, if we can maybe put that on the next budget. The other thing, as far as like the tax levies and stuff like that, I think that's, we may constantly get that information, and it may be something we want to keep in front of us at the work sessions moving forward. But I had shared with the chairman earlier this week that I was thinking about three motions for tonight, and I'd like to share that with all of y'all, because I hadn't talked to all of y'all about that. So the first motion that I was considering putting out here tonight, but y'all need time to digest this, and that's only fair. The first one was to eliminate supervisor salaries for the next term coming in. See, we can't change that now. Only thing we can do is refuse it. You see what I'm saying? But what we can do is vote for what the next salary will be for the next board coming in, then if they want to change it. So my thinking was, that becomes $124,000 over four years, that takes off one cent of real estate. And I think anybody that really wants to come up here and do it, they'll do it for none. The towns did it forever, you know, so there's a saving. That's a government cut right there, getting rid of supervisor salary. The other thing I was looking to potentially put a motion on the floor for was eliminating pay for committees. Any committees that are getting paid, we eliminate, eliminate the pay for it. That would affect this guy directly. So again, I'd be taking that...
That comes out of their budgets. I thought about that later.
Does it?
Yes.
But don't...
That's their committee's determination.
So you'd have to back it out of our...
Our gift to them.
Our gift to them.
Yeah, but wouldn't that still be some sort of a savings? Again, that's another governmental cut, it's something we got to, we would have to discuss. The other one that I thought about, it's still, it may be unobtainable, guys, but it was to reduce the, by 10%, the governmental taxes that we do, the spending that we do, by 10%. You know, the, the real estate revenue over $6 million, the personal property's over $4 million, but listen to what I'm saying there. I'm not saying cut all departments by 10%. What I'm saying is, fine, 10% to cut, that gives you a million dollars. Somewhere to work with, somewhere else. So can it happen? I don't know. But like, like one thing, like the school, of course, is our biggest one, you got probably one of the finest, finest directors that you've, that I've ever seen, and, you know, I've met different ones, different places, or you look at the fiscal strength of different places. If there's something that can be found, you know, I'm sure the school can find it, but we're talking everybody. You know, at some point, you may have to force cuts. So here we are, again, and it was, I'm glad to see that the school was already working on their budget. So if there's something that can be cut, where can we cut it without affecting the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens? And as far as something that we had talked about in, before, and it was brung up again tonight about helping our elderly, it's just simple, y'all. I move to eliminate the taxes for anyone 65 years old or older that are retired. It's that simple.
You can't do it. You can't do it.
Wait a minute, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. Don't tell me we can't because we can. Here's the problem. You take a second and you, three of us say, we do it, and we do it, but, but where do you get the surplus from? Don't tell me we can't do it because we can. We can absolutely do it, but you got to find the funding to supplement, so.
That's the problem.
That's the problem. So do we put our feet to the fire and do it? Pull the trigger?
After we find the funding. We hate like hell to do it and then be caught up with a negative budget.
There you go, but the intent, but the intent, I say, the intent is there, I think. Make it clear, we want to do it.
I'd love to do it.
Okay.
But intent, I mean, I play about $20 worth of lottery, yeah, and the intent is there, but it don't get done.
I'm done, I'm done.
All right, Mr. Toth.
It bothered me hearing the, and I've said this earlier, and I'll say it again, the term poor. I remember coming right in that big building over next door, listening to somebody else's case before mine, and a well-respected judge that is, that I've had, I still got great respect to, he addressed the individual for a court-appointed lawyer, and he didn't quite understand him, so he point-blank asked him, are you poor? Well, my lawyer was there for me, not for that one, he stood up, and he, he was actually on the bar exam. He said, that's not too nice. And it's not. Because when you think of somebody, look, go to a third, if you want to see some poor folks, I know there's some less fortunate folks in, in the state of Virginia, in Notaway County, but go to a third rural country if you want to see some poor folk. Go to New York City and see them sleeping on the grates. I haven't seen anybody sleeping in the street in Blackstone, Crewe, or Berkville. I know they're less fortunate, they, and they don't know how they're going to make ends meet, and they do rely on that food pantry up there. But I hate for the term of poor. You know, it's a bad, it's a bad, and then Mr. Ingram, you told a lot of children that you knew that was less fortunate.
Certainly.
I mean, their parents would, would skip a meal just so they could have clothes that would match the other children's clothes so they wouldn't be made fun of.
I wondered how they got to school sometimes in the morning.
Exactly right, you saw it all.
Yep.
I, but having said that, the levy was essential, it was advertised, nobody called me and say, hey, rather than you doing this tax levy, would y'all as a board consider doing this? Nobody responded to come up here to speak to us publicly when it was advertised, and they may be like me a whole lot of times. I used to not read the paper so much. But they sure opened that bill up, and now they know what to, what they're faced with, and we're going to work to, to get the levy reduced off. We got to.
Financially challenged.
Yeah, right. Well, it's financially challenged, and, and the challenge was this, if you didn't fund the EMS, they was, they won't come in. They couldn't. Who worked, who's going to work for free? I mean, I did tell a fellow, those who.
Volunteers.
Oh, and hats off to them. And, and people keep telling the, the fire department and said, it, it's going to go, and I've heard several of y'all say, it's, it's going to go to where it's not volunteering anymore. I agree with that, but here's the problem I got with that. You got men riding down the road that donate their time to leave work to come answer a fire call, and then you got people like me, who I don't say, and you won't hear me say, they're going to start getting paid, that we got to start paying, and well, I'm going to be riding to that fire call one day, and I'm going to think, you know, I could be getting paid for this. My daddy, my granddaddy volunteered his time, but now they offering to pay me. So I want my money. So keep on talking and poking, and it's definitely going to come. If you say the dog ain't going to bite you, the dog ain't going to bite you, he might not bite you. Take a stick and hit it. He got teeth. But if you go in there and say the dog going to bite me, he going to bite me, he going to bite me, chances are, you going to get bit. I just wish that some of the people that spoke tonight, and, and regarding the, and I already got some pushback, a lot of pushback, on the voting of the school. Already, the citizens spoke, nobody spoke in support of selling that school or turning that school over to the, to the school board to sell. Nobody spoke that, but they spoke quite in opposition of it. And if you're really doing what we're supposed to do, who voted for us, to do what our citizens want, that was the right motion, that was the right second, and that was the right vote from the other three.
Yes, sir.
If anybody needs me, I call you. That's all I got to say.
Well, one of the things that I've always asked for is when there's issues to be discussed, that this room be full. We had to get chairs out, make sure everybody had, seated down as we could. So I appreciate the citizens of this county coming to this board, speaking their minds, letting us know what we did wrong, what we did right, things we could do better. That's the only way this works, is if people talk to us and share their thoughts and views. So I very much appreciate that, and that's all I've got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's next?
Going into closed session.
I move that the Board of Supervisors of Notaway County, Virginia, adjourn into closed meeting pursuant to Code of Virginia 2.2-3711A8. Consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, specifically matters pending in county administration.
We've got a motion, do we have a second? All the way there?
Uh.
Lights on?
All right.
All right.